Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May, the March 9th School Board Meeting of the Berkeley Unified School District. Ms. Barrios, can you please begin?
Yes, good evening and welcome. Siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there'll be another and final opportunity for additional public comment. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. To participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting the Raise Your Hand. To comment by phone, you'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you wait to raise your hand until public comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you'll have to wait until next public comment period. When called upon, you'll be promoted to a panelist. This means that you will appear on screen. If you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call on our students first. If you are a student who wishes to speak, please write "student" or "s" at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, she also has a discretion to allow for extra time for those who need translation or have other special needs. When your time has elapsed, you'll see Vice President Babbitt holding a sign letting you know you have fifteen seconds left. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionarles un resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos procedimientos priminares, un periodo de treinta minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las diez, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar en comentario público y parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron la oportunidad de proporcionar comentario durante el primer periodo de comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, favor de hacer, favor de levantar la mano ya haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y selección el botón Levantar la mano or Raise Your Hand. Para comentar por teléfono, levanta la mano presionando estrella nueve. Favor de hacerlo ya, ya aquí se espera hasta el inicio del periodo de comentarios públicos. Tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la, de la reunión para participar. Usualmente, la presidente le llamará a los, a los estudiantes primero. La presidente de la mesa directiva votará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adopción especial. Al ser llamado, será promocionado a panelista y aparecerá en pantalla. Si no desea de aparecer en pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Cuando le faltan quince segundos, la vicepresidente Babbitt le hará saber levantando un cartel. Si sigue hablando cuando se acaba el tiempo, puede terminar su oración, pero, pero por favor trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios. Can you please call the role for the board?
Student Director, Anduna Mascareña Swan.
Here.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Director Ty Albert.
Present.
Director Anna Vasudev.
Present.
Vice President Laura Babbitt.
Here.
President Khadijah Brown.
Present. Thank you, and please let the record reflect that this open session begins at seven P M. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the role to approve the agenda?
Student Director Mascareña Swan.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Albert.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
Vice President Babbitt.
Yes.
President Brown.
Yes. Thank you so much. We will now report out from closed session. Vice President Babbitt, are you ready for your report? Yes, closed session began at five thirty P M with all members present. For item three point one, the motion was approved. It was moved by Director Albert, seconded by Julie Sinai, and approved unanimously for item three point, one point two and one point, the other two items, we gave direction to staff and that's the report. Thank you, Vice President Babbitt. We have now moved to the portion in our agenda for public comment. As Ms. Barrios said in her opening comments, if you are a student, please remember to put "s" anywhere near your name at the beginning or at the end, or put "student" at the end or the beginning of your name. So that way you will be given priority to speak. This is the final opportunity to raise your hand for this first public comment period. Any hand raised after the public comment period, period begins will then have another opportunity to comment, and that will be in our second opportunity for public comments later on in tonight's meeting. We will begin our public comment period now. I don't see any students identified for public comment, so we will begin with Phyllis Davis, followed by Monique B. And in our public comment period this evening with Anna. Ms. Barrios, can you please promote Phyllis Davis?
Phyllis is on.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, thank you for having me. I am Phyllis Davis, and my husband and I have four children ages thirteen to twenty-four. All of our children have gone to Berkeley Public Schools. I am in favor of keeping the Berkeley Independent Study Virtual Program in place for the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three academic year. Please do not remove it. The virtual program protects medically fragile students. The virtual program protects immune compromised and medically fragile family members. The virtual program is educationally beneficial for my two children who are enrolled at B I S, my seventh grade daughter and my eleventh grade son. The virtual program infrastructure is in place. There are incredibly dedicated virtual-only teachers. Why dismantle this excellent program? There could be another COVID variant incubating right now. First off, the virtual program protects immune compromised students and family members. Recent studies, including one in Nature, have shown that non-hospitalized COVID cases can lead to loss of brain capacity. Also, long COVID occurs in a significant number of infected people. My seventh grade daughter's potential transmission of COVID to our household includes her older brother, who is in eleventh grade remotely enrolled at B I S. He is immune suppressed and suffers from juvenile ankylosing spondylosis, a chronic arthritic disease. Being in the virtual program has actually let my son participate in classes with peers in a more normal way than if he had to use the B I S home hospital educational option. If our daughter brought COVID home, my husband, who has asthma, could be severely impacted. I am immune suppressed as well, and I suffer from various autoimmune diseases as well as Parkinson's disease. I could be incapacitated and would probably be hospitalized. We also have three grandparents in their nineties who are very frail and vulnerable. The virtual program at B I S has been very beneficial for our seventh grade daughter. I can't praise the virtual program teachers and pedagogy enough. They are wonderful. Our daughter was bored to tears and her person-
Pardon me, Ms. Davis.
Yes.
But unfortunately, your time is up, but thank you so much for speaking to the board, and you can always email us your comments or come back for the second opportunity. Pardon the interruption.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Please, public, we have about twenty-three public comments tonight, and if it wasn't identified in the beginning, I want to take this opportunity to pause and ask everyone to please adjust their comments to fit into the one-minute allotted time period due to the large amount of public commenters that we have this evening. So please, as you were saying, your, your public comments, pay close attention to Vice President Babbitt, who will have a timer in the back of her and will also hold three different signs for you. The first sign will be when you have thirty seconds left. The second sign will be when you have fifteen seconds left. And the final sign that she will hold up will identify when your time is up. So please focus on Director Babbitt's, Vice President Babbitt's signs so that I don't have to cut anyone off. Okay. Next, we will go to Monique B., followed by Ladies of Campus Dout.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Monique, and I'm an active home repair teacher who is currently assisting my child in the online B I S program. I'm here today because of the possible termination of this program that has saved our lives in this past year. My child, due to medically sensitive condition, is not able to attend school in person and therefore relies on this online option to ensure her safety and her education. In these emotional times, we are seeing higher gas prices and food prices along with waves of severe illnesses due to COVID. And if this pandemic revives itself in the future, it is detrimental that the board thinks of our B U S D families who may need other options to survive. Berkeley is known as an inclusive place for all types of families, but if you take away this program, then you will be denying not only our families, but also other families the access to keep their child active in school and protected. Please find a way to gather more funds to keep this program another year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ladies of Campus Dout, followed by Yvette Falarka.
Good evening. Thank you very much. My, I'm here on behalf of Latinos Unidos of Berkeley. We want to speak today about our serious concerns regarding the multilingual master plan. Although we are grateful to the district for entering into contract with GABE, we have concerns about the district's continued lack of engagement with our E L L families about the master plan, status of the work, and the implementation of the plan. Other engagement efforts like Project to Inspire have been great, but our concern is more focused on the multilingual master plan and its implementation. Up until today, we have not heard of invitations to the community for input on the development of the master plan. We have spoken with D-like parents who have commented on the same issues. We are here today to hear GABE's update, but would like to request a multilingual timeline with detailed information on deliverables each quarter for the master plan. Ideally, these deliverables could be explained to our E L L families and evening meetings, not a meeting in the middle of the day where there are no simultaneous interpretation. We would like assurance that the E L L multilingual master plan will include an implementation plan with clear metrics and goals to support our English language learners, a budget for implementation for the next two to three years of the E L L master plan. This should include a budget of staffing and budget for professional development for teachers and staff. We also want to make sure the new curriculum is rigorous, unlike our current curriculum.
Thank you so much, Ms. of Campus Dout. I'm so sorry to cut you off, but you have reached your time.
Sorry, is it also possible to do it in Spanish, at least that part that I did? Is that possible to translate that part?
Absolutely, so then you'll have an additional minute to translate in Spanish.
Okay, thank you. Estamos aquí, estamos agradecidos con el distrito por obtener un contrato con GABE. Nos preocupa la continua falta de compromisos del distrito con nuestras familias del aprendizaje inglés sobre el plan maestro. El estado del trabajo y la implementación del plan. Otros esfuerzos de participación como Project to Inspire han sido excelentes, pero nuestra preocupación se centra más en el plan maestro multilingüe y su implementación. Estamos aquí pidiendo que el, el plan maestro incluye un plan de implementación con métricas y objetivos claros para apoyar a nuestros estudiantes en inglés. Un presupuesto para la implementación para los años dos, tres del plan maestro multilingüe. Esto debo incluir un presupuesto para la dotación de personal y un presupuesto para el desarrollo profesional de los maestros y personal. También queremos asegurarnos de que el nuevo plan de estudio sea riguroso. Un plan, una explicación de cómo estamos abordando las preocupaciones de replegstración para los estudiantes de inglés a largo plazo, y también pedimos que el plan incluye un proceso de revisión de cada tres a cinco años. Una vez que el plan esté completo, solicitamos que el plan maestro se publiquito, publique.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Ms. Falarka, followed by Matt Small.
I'm Yvette Falarka. I teach middle school in the Berkeley Independent Studies Virtual Program. Do not cut the online virtual education program. It's a lifeline for students and families. It's been vital for me and my family. We all have diverse reasons for choosing virtual, but we need it. This pandemic isn't over. COVID deaths in California among the vaccinated rose sharply during the Omicron surge, and the number of vaccinated people who died from COVID was triple the number who died previously. The end of the indoor mask mandates in the schools and in the community, plus cutting virtual education, compounds the risk to everybody. The mask mandates need to stay, and so should the virtual program for the fall. None of us should be forced to gamble with ours or our loved ones' lives. Any family or teacher who wants virtual instruction in the fall should get it, and in Berkeley, where we pride ourselves in diversity and inclusion, that should include diverse families and educators who need virtual education.
Thank you, Ms. Falarka. Next, we will have Matt Small, followed by Anna Martinez.
Hi, I am Matt Small. I'm a parent and PTA member at Emerson Elementary. I have a comment about the slow pace of hiring staff for the after-school programs. At Emerson, our learns team can accommodate less than a third of the families in our school, and the program coordinator has made it clear the problem is staffing. We've heard the superintendent's argument that there are hiring challenges in this labor market, but we also understand that B U S D's internal H R processes contribute significantly to the delays. Specifically, the need to have all new applicants at all schools processed through the centralized merit commission has slowed things to a crawl even before the pandemic started. And now with hiring shortages, it's made things even worse. Our families need access to reliable after-school care. I would urge you to take the challenge seriously and reevaluate the goals and the methods of the merit commission. Specifically, I would urge you to consider giving hiring responsibilities back to local learns programs, at least until the hiring crunch is behind us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Anna Martinez, followed by Rana Cho.
Hi, I apologize. My daughter would like to speak first. She's a student at Berkeley Independent Study, and I didn't know how to put her "s," her name in her "s" on the screen, so I apologize.
Oh, that's okay. I'm so sorry she didn't give preference.
No problem.
Welcome.
My address.
My name is, my name is Teres Martinez. I like online Zoom. I really like online Zoom. I have a really good connection with my teacher, Mr. Stevens. We learn something new each, each week, and it is really fun. That is why I want, I want to keep distance learning and to stay safe because some parents have different rules in their house.
Thank you so much.
Is it okay if I add as well?
Yes, please.
Great. I'm a teacher at Berkeley Independent Study, and I'm also a parent of eight children who are attending virtual learning classes through the virtual learning program at B I S. It's critical to our families since two of our family members are high-risk. My children have really thrived in this program because the teachers have gone above and beyond in adapting their lessons to online learning format and also building critical relationships to make the program a success. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here, Anna, and thank you, Teres, for what you said and for being here with us this evening. It's nice to meet you. Next, we have Rana, followed by Matt Tietum.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for this time of public engagement. I'm Rana Cho, a parent and PTA co-president at Emerson Elementary School in District Eight. I attended the facilities subcommittee meeting last week and the bond oversight committee this week to hear how the funds raised by Bond Measure G were going to be spent to improve our schools. Facilities Director John Colleese presented a list of prioritized projects, and at the top of the list was a twenty-five million dollar parking garage tennis facility combo in downtown Berkeley. Meanwhile, at Emerson, we have antiquated ventilation systems during a multi-year pandemic, regular fire seasons. We need new plumbing and paint and other basic infrastructure improvements. I implore you to prioritize improving the campuses like Emerson and John Muir to meet the stated priorities of Measure G before considering spending any money on massive new projects which are frankly lower priority than the health and safety of our students, especially our most vulnerable younger age students. Thank you for your service and hopefully the representation of Berkeley Public School community and our needs.
Thank you, Rana. Next, we will have Matty, followed by Hillary Brooks.
Good evening. Before I start my comments, I would just like to suggest that maybe a staff member does the signs instead of Director Babbitt. I would like her to be able to pay attention to the comments instead of not flip signs. And also, it's hard to see them because sometimes we don't have her on the screen. So we're not ignoring, it's just we don't see the signs. But to my comments, I would like to talk about the B H S schedule, bell schedule redesign. You all received an email from me in this regard last week. I want to hit three major bullet points here. One is data-driven process, the other one is transparency, and the third one is equity. B H S and Principal Regosa presented this idea last June in front of you with a plan to implement within ten weeks. It just comes to indicate the lack of grasp of the magnitude of what a schedule redesign for B H S means, the concept that you could implement it in ten weeks. Now, that schedule has been updated since and now extended, but still, according to the current schedule, the committee from B H S intends to give you, the board, about a month next year to review what they're proposing and approve it.
Sorry to interrupt you, but you have reached your time. Thank you so much.
Let me, let me just say the last sentence. I would ask-
Oh, I think you have the opportunity to, to do that. I need to go on to Ms. Brooks, if that's okay with you.
Thank you. Don't be a rubber stump.
What does that mean? Ms. Brooks, followed by Jessica.
Hi, I want to endorse everything that the first two speakers and Ms. Falarka said about the remote option at B I S with similar health reasons in my family. Back when masks were mandated in September, my child saw that King Middle School teachers were not always correcting students who pulled down their masks in class, you know, and that's when it was mandated. In October, due to our disabilities, she became too anxious to go to school in person at all, something that is not uncommon in middle school and high school students. If this had been next year, she would have had no public educational option at all. And I don't understand why something that's already in place is being ended. Where is Berkeley's support for disabled students and families? Please, please do not end it. There is no reason. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Jessica, followed by Gagan Thind.
Hi there. My name is Jessica. I'm a current parent to a seventh grader in the virtual program of the Berkeley Independent Studies Program. We just want to say how much we appreciate it. We started off in-person at King, loved it there. However, we had to take a pause from in-person learning for health reasons, and we just don't know what we would have done without this virtual program. The teaching has been superb, and it got us through a difficult time that we're still in. So again, we just don't know what we would have done without it, and thank you for having it. We hope you continue it.
Thank you. Next, we will have Gagan Thind, followed by Linda Craigill.
Is it my turn? I'm sorry.
Yes, please. Welcome. Go ahead.
I'm sorry for the delay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gagan Thind. I am a parent at Emerson Elementary with two kids. We have high immunocompromised family, met family members in our family, and we have extended family that has already had long COVID. I highly, highly recommend that we keep the independent study for families that needed to keep families safe and also to keep indoor masks be mandatory instead of being optional. Students are already being bullied for continuing to wear their masks outside. If Berkeley Unified cannot control this, how does it expect to be able to control bullying around continuing to wear masks indoors with the optional mandate? Be, Berkeley Unified should not be considering making masks optional inside until we demonstrate that it can protect kids who still mask. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Thind. Next, we will have Linda Craigill, followed by Gravity Search Marketing.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Lydia Craigill. I'm a special education teacher at Berkeley High School, and I want to talk about the high turnover rate and staffing shortages that we're facing in special ed. Throughout this school year, the teachers in our department have been absorbing the burden of understaffing our special education program, and ultimately, the students also absorb that burden. Students who specialized academic instruction minutes that are mandated in their I E P were served by untrained substitute teachers for months in whose cases were managed by teachers working beyond their contractually mandated caseload caps. Those caps are negotiated in order to make our jobs more sustainable and allow us to serve our students better. But if we don't have the people, we, we can't hurt our contracts not being fulfilled and running our special education department on a skeleton crew with disproportionate number of new teachers. Teachers are still getting their teaching credentials. Means our highest education level deserves this. And I'll wrap up just to say that we need competitive compensation and benefits in order to hire those teachers who choose to work with our kids. We need the highest level of expertise, care, and support. Please keep them-
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have... Oh, you changed your name.
I changed my name.
Go ahead.
My actual name is Kritiva. Hi, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, everybody. I am just here to add my voice to the others who I've called in in support of continuing the virtual schooling next year. And I just want to mention not only the students and families that are, have higher, higher vulnerabilities and sort of draw their risk line in a different place than where you, the board, have drawn the line kind of on behalf of all of, all of the families and the entire district. Some families have particular needs, and also some teachers have particular needs, and I want to mention them because I think that they are precious. They are, we know, more valuable than, than the most precious diamond and gold in the world, and we really need to keep them in the district and I think accommodate both of these groups. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next, we will have Spencer Pritchard, followed by Carrie Buesnap. Mr. Pritchard, can you correct me if I'm wrong if you were making the union comments tonight or participating in union comments tonight?
Hi there. Yeah, on behalf of the Teachers of Color Network, I'll be speaking.
Okay.
Yeah, so hi, my name is Spencer Pritchard, the current fifth-year teacher at Berkeley High. I'm the co-chair of the AFAM Studies Department and a co-facilitator for the Teachers of Color Network. I'm just here to focus on our hiring timeline. I know you all have heard before, it's pretty bad. We're one of the last to post, and we're slow to hire. When I was a teaching candidate, if this district wasn't already, if I didn't already have private experience at Berkeley High, it wouldn't even be on my radar. Every single teacher candidate in my cohort got positions before me, some of the months before. And I even taught, student-taught at Berkeley High. So it shocked me to learn that at the start of the school year, some of my colleagues this year were not able to work because their contract was still being finalized. Many of them volunteered their time teaching the first few days of school. I want to commend the work that's already been happening from our principal, Regosa, from the district, or TSA, CAC, or BROW for their efforts on helping hire, but they're just not enough. Other districts are way ahead, and B U S D is notoriously one of the last to hire. We're very serious about hiring teachers of color and the best teaching candidates. We need to be interviewing in March and signing contracts in April. Internal postings of known positions should go out in March of teens. We may not know everything, the complete hiring picture, but we know enough. We're not competitive enough with salary benefits to, to even allow us to have a later timeline. So that plus a slow hiring process is a recipe for disaster. Many teachers are leaving the profession, and the hiring pool is continuing to shrink. So-
Pardon me, Ms. Pritchard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we'll have Camila Asher, followed by St. Collins. So first, we'll have Carrie Buesnap, then followed by Camila Asher.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Carrie Bassuner, and I just wanted to talk about the bell schedule redesign at Berkeley High. I have one son. He's a ninth grader. And I'm, I have concern that this bell schedule redesign was definitely moving too fast before, and I just want to make sure that we think through this change before we do it. The committee seems, has stated that they have two goals. One of them is to improve education for all students, and the other goal, as I understood it, was to improve, was to better serve the students who are not currently being supported, which they define as English language learners, students with disabilities, African Americans, and Hispanics. Which um, they define as English language learners, students with disabilities, African Americans and Hispanics. Um, I feel like those are two extremely broad goals, which um, perhaps we ought to take a step back and ask how to address those goals or, or how did they come up with a bell schedule redesign to solve those problems? I don't really know. Um, but when you got, you guys are going to be asked to make a decision on this um, in the fall, I guess. I'm, I'm hopeful.
Sorry to interrupt you, but you have also reached your time. I apologize. Uh, next we will go to Kamala Asher followed by Stephen Collins.
Good evening. I'm Kamala Asher, the teacher lead for Berkeley Independent Study, K eight assisted homeschool program. I'm here tonight uh, to urge you to re, to consider maintaining the virtual option for the K eight students of Berkeley. This year, almost all of our K five assisted homeschool students are meeting virtually with their teachers. And half of our middle school students are meeting virtually. In the BUSD's K five virtual academy, of course, all of the students are meeting virtually. It's clear that the teachers who are teaching virtually in these two programs are providing an excellent educational program, which allows these students to remain in school and in BUSD. Next school year, there will still be students who are either medically fragile or who live with family members who are at risk for serious illness, as you've heard from, from many people tonight. These students and their families will need a virtual educational option. Please consider maintaining this virtual option for these students. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we will have Stephen Collins followed by Amanda Toporik. Um, and can you please, just as a reminder, you all, it's really difficult to have to, you know, stop you in the middle of your comments. So just as a reminder, we have one minute. If you can um, go ahead and concise your comments, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Oh, hi Director Brown. This is Steve Collins. I meant to sign up for, uh, for Union.
No problem, uh, Mr. Collins. We'll, if you can go back as a panelist, raise your hand. I'll remember to uh, grab you for, for comment time.
Okay, great.
Union comment time. Okay. Thank you. Um, out of curiosity, am I at the same, can you promote, Ms. Barrios, can you promote Amanda who I think is next? May, uh, it may be the same for her as well.
Hi y'all. Um, thanks for having me. Good evening. My name is Amanda Toporik and I teach at Berkeley High School and I'm the secretary of BFT. I'm in my fifth year teaching and in the district. This year, I'm watching some of the colleagues I've admired most leave Berkeley High and many even leave teaching. Retaining our teachers means we get high quality, uh, students get a high-quality experienced educator, many of whom are familiar faces. And I also personally know how important it is to have veteran teachers as mentors and role models. More than ever, we are losing teachers, not just to other districts, but to other professions. Other professions are able to provide employees with full benefits. In public education, healthcare is a massive cost for our district and our educators. I myself last month paid three hundred and seventy-one dollars of my paycheck towards Kaiser benefits. As someone lower on the pay scale, this is a sizable chunk of my paycheck. My colleagues, is that my time? Okay, my colleagues was families.
That is your, uh, you have a few more minutes, but Mr. Pork, I think you were making public comments for Union comment time.
No, 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 I'm not.
Okay, well then you have your fifteen seconds.
Thank you. Um, as someone lower on, on the pay scale, this is a sizable chunk of my paycheck. And my colleagues with families are paying, paying close to a thousand dollars a month. To close, we can start by controlling what we can control. BFT members ask our district to partner with us and continue to share the burdens of rising healthcare costs. Um, and as a healthcare, as healthcare costs rise in a profession that does not cover full benefits, other professions look more and more attractive.
Thank you so much. Next we will have Claudia followed by Dan McDonough.
Associate Superintendent Aurelio, I'm having difficult um, time promoting the next attendee.
Uh, let's see, I just clicked on it and it doesn't seem, so for Claudia, let, let me try another way. Can you unmute?
She's promoted now.
Claudia, can you unmute and begin your comment? Looks like Claudia's.
While you all work on the troubleshooting on the background, I'm going to ask to promote Dan McDonough and then we'll come back to Claudia.
We can do that.
Thank you. Hi, uh, Dan McDonough, you may begin your comments. Dan McDonough?
Oh, sorry, there we are. Okay. I'm a, I'm a carpenter. I'm not a technologist. So anyhow, I just wanted, uh, thank you guys. I like your backgrounds this month, women's history, celebrating another historically marginalized community. Appreciate that. I'm looking forward to the uh, unvaccinated history month. That's what I'm looking forward to. I'm looking for one of y'all to step up and be a hero. Get your name on a building in support of, uh, you know, people who made a different medical decision. I want to just take a moment to note that we are here in the birthplace of the free speech movement. Home to one of the greatest public institutions in the world and uh, somehow we don't want to deal in fact. Eighty percent of BUSD students in January that were COVID positive were fully vaccinated. Year-to-date in the school, the staff, eighty percent fully vaccinated COVID cases. A carpenter had to find that information out. It wasn't public, wasn't shared in Berkeley side or in any letter from Dr. Stevens. And uh, the byproduct of that is my son was assaulted uh, last week by an adult student. Uh, who did that because you have fostered an environment where it's okay to dehumanize unvaccinated students. Just want to let you know the issue is still at play. We're still pushing forward. And I just, um, just want to go on record and note those case rates in light of the fact that you're about to fire one hundred and fifty staffers because they don't want to take an experimental shot.
You, but you have also reached your time, but thank you for taking the time to speak to us.
You bet. Lastly, just want to go out, you know, I'm really sorry you weren't able to uh, eliminate prom access. I know that must have hurt. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Uh, Claudia followed by Anson. Claudia, are you able to connect? We'll come back to Claudia and we'll go to Anson.
Good evening. I'm a parent of a first and sixth grader attending Berkeley Independent Studies. And I urge BUSD to continue the virtual education program in the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Ms. Filarka, Ms. Jenkins have worked hard to foster a rich online learning community, keeping my family safe while also allowing my children to flourish academically. And in-person education is essential for most and it doesn't meet the needs of all families, such as my multi-generational household with medically fragile members. COVID continues to be a serious threat. It's imperative that a decision is made to continue this necessary program as soon as possible and widely communicated so that the many families who need it will be able to continue to benefit from this important program in the fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Uh, we're, we'll try Claudia again. I think she is promoted as another panelist. So if we can uh, promote her again, um, and then followed by Brody Sandel.
I think Claudia's challenges, she might be on an older version of Zoom, so it's not actually leveling us to promote her. She would have, she would have to press the unmute button, but I don't think that's working for her.
Okay. Claudia, another option would be to, if you can quickly maybe call in on a phone. Um, and we'll be able to, to still identify your comment. Thank you. Uh, welcome Brody.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. I'm Esther Cardona and I have my two Sandel children who are students at Malcolm X Elementary. And so first, my kindergartner wants to say something about the approaching end of the mask mandate. And then I'd like to speak for a second after him.
I would feel better if we had to, to wear masks in the world so that everybody can be safe.
Thanks, Jessica. So I've written to the school board and I'm really concerned about the end of indoor masking. Um, because that's one of our most effective tools in preventing the spread of COVID. Particularly when the district has not yet required all students, all faculty and all staff on campuses to be fully vaccinated and boosted. Until that's an option, it's frankly irresponsible to allow people the option of taking their masks off. I've been all around Berkeley, um, checking which places are still asking for masks. And the places that do are really cornerstones of our community. And they've told me, we can't verify people's vaccination status. We're worried about immunocompromised people. We're worried about kids under five who can't get vaccinated yet. And it's alarming to me that the school district, who should be the people who care most about the health and safety and well-being of our children, aren't willing to take a step and make it mandatory.
I'm so sorry to cut you off, but you've also reached your time. Sorry about that. But thank you Sandel family for speaking to us this evening and thank you Jasper for your comments as well.
You're welcome.
So sweet. Um, okay, next we will um, go to Laura Rivas. Thank you so much. Um, and for the record, um, Ms. Rivas was giving an additional amount of time uh, to support our policies around translation. So thank you, Ms. Rivas, for your comments. Claudia, I wanted to check and see if you were in um, the list of attendees again before we move on. If not, um, Claudia, you and anyone else who is here to speak to the board tonight have a second opportunity to speak to us during our second uh, public comment period towards the end of the meeting. Uh, we will now move on to our opportunity to hear from our unions. I'm, I'm sorry, to hear from our committees first. Are there any committee comments this evening? Seeing none, we will now move to our union comments. Ms. Barrios, do you have any video comments for unions this evening?
Yes, I do. I'll go ahead and share my screen.
Thank you so much. Ms. Barrios, we are not able to hear the sound. If you don't mind resharing your screen with the sound option as well. Thank you.
Paying ten percent. Hello, Dr. Stevens and the Berkeley School Board. I am Matt Meyer, the president of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I want to begin by thanking you for already approving the parking and tennis project at Berkeley High School. This project is a critical need for the site. Because of the location of the school, off-street parking is just not available. Because of the shortage of parking spaces, Berkeley High has trouble getting substitutes. Subs can work at other sites without paying ten percent of their wages in parking for the day. Additionally, the current lot is not safe. There have been numerous break-ins and just last week, a teacher's catalytic converter was almost stolen in broad daylight. Many of us have to make one or two different kid drop-offs before school. Not knowing whether there will be parking when arriving to work causes stress even before the day begins. If you park on the street, you need to leave the site one or two times a day in order to move your car. Paying for parking in the garage is a four hundred dollar expense a month that most of us cannot afford. The district also made a promise to the tennis community that they would finally have tennis courts that can serve our high school students after a decade of advocacy. The plan to add maintenance and facilities to this project is a creative solution to a real issue our district is facing with the closure of the Russell Street Maintenance Facility. Not only is it the most of cost-effective plan, freeing up money for other projects, it needs to happen as soon as possible. Right now, these departments have been spread throughout the city and are mostly housed all the way in Richmond. Berkeley High is a central location that will reduce time and save money on gas to serve district sites. Another discussion topic today is the creation of a strategic plan for the district. We think that this process will help focus our district on top priorities and provide metrics to evaluate how we are doing. It will be a framework that will uh, allow us to allocate resources and make decisions that focus on critical student needs. BFT is excited to be back at the negotiating table at the district. We look forward to the collective bargaining process where we can sit down together to address different concerns that, that both the district and, and teachers experience. We know Berkeley is not immune to the staffing crisis. You'll see our hand-printed posters throughout the city. Supporting our staff and keeping them in our district directly supports our students and strengthens our community. You will hear directly from our members over the course of the next few months on topics that are important to them. The drop in COVID cases is reason to celebrate. We are still not at the low transmission levels we had last summer, but the trend is looking good. We agree with CDPH that masks work and are strongly recommended for use indoors. Most teachers will remain masked in the classroom and we hope that families and students continue to follow the strongly recommended guidance. In each classroom, there are students and families with underlying conditions. We want to end this year safe and strong. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much for our comments from BFT. Um, we had additional lining comments uh, in the public comment period that were supposed to be timed from, timed seated from the president. And so we received those comments already and the board can govern ourselves according to those comments. Um, we will now uh, call on um, our uh, local twenty-one comments to be presented uh, by Stephen Collins. And for the record, unions uh, will receive six minutes for their comments.
Hello, board. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Unfortunately, my camera isn't working on my, on my computer, but uh, hello, everybody. Good evening. Um, thank you for having me. I'm here to speak uh, today on item twelve point five on your agenda, which is the permanent relocation of Plan Operations. Um, as you all know, the forty-plus employees at Plan Operations have been in a subpar facility for decades. Um, there was money in, but in a bond budget eight years ago to redo the facility. We should have been in a new facility already. Um, but that money was taken to pay for another budget, another project uh, handful of years ago. Uh, further delaying uh, the right of all these employees to go into a decent facility. Um, so now um, we have all, they have all been displaced. They're in temporary housing, um, soon to be um, moved out to Richmond. Um, which will make uh, matters much worse. Um, but it's necessary. It is what we have to do right now. But these employees deserve a modern, nice facility like the rest of the district has. Uh, the district has the money for it. There's absolutely no reason that they shouldn't be in a nice facility. The Facilities Department has looked at options. And of the four options that are available to the district, one is a. And of the four options that are available to the district, one isn't feasible. Two of them have timelines that look out seven plus years, leaving really only one good option, and that is to integrate facilities into the tennis court facility on Novia Street across from the high school. This is really, it's a centrally located site, giving us access to all areas of the city. It is the shortest timeframe with the possibility of these employees being in a nice new facility in three to five years. And it is also the cheapest option that the district is looking at with almost half the cost of the next highest item. So Local 21 recommends that the board approve plant operations going to and being integrated into the tennis court facility. Thank you all.
Thank you so much and thank you for being here. Are there any other union comments? Seeing none, at this time, we will move on to board member comments. But before we do board members, I want to remind you and the rest of the community that we have an incredibly extensive agenda tonight and more extensive than we've had in the past time. So I want you to please use that information, keep that information in the back of your mind as you give your comments tonight and on every discussion and action item that we have agendas. And so we'll go ahead and begin the public comment period with Director Alper.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out. I don't have any other comments tonight. Thank you, President Brown.
Next, we'll go to Director Sinai.
I'm a model after Director Alper. I too want to appreciate everybody who's come out tonight. And my only announcement is that due to travel plans, I need to cancel my open office hours this month. So I will be asking the superintendent to remove that from the website for this month. But I'm always available by email and I can set up a Zoom or a phone call if you need to meet me in the virtual land in the course of the month. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Director Vasudev.
Oh man, I'm breaking with the trend here. I actually have comments, but I'll try to go through them very quickly. Thank you all for coming tonight. I'm especially grateful to the various committee members who gave thoughtful public comments about our COVID-19 mitigation efforts. I also want to take the opportunity to say Happy Women's History Month. I'm sure everybody has noticed our backgrounds. And I want to thank the staff who helped put these beautiful backgrounds together. And we celebrate this month to reflect the often overlooked contributions of women. So please remember to celebrate all of the amazing women in our everyday lives. In Nicaragua, where my family is from, we call strong women guerrillas in recognition of the amazing women who defended human rights during the Nicaraguan revolution. And so I'll be celebrating my everyday guerrillas and encourage everybody here to do so as well. Since our last board meeting, I've had the pleasure of completing my visit to all our three middle schools this year. And I want to thank the Willard Middle School community for welcoming me most recently. I love touring the Black Box Theater, the Maker Space, learning about the Growing Leaders Program where our students are learning impressive hospitality and business skills. They're putting together meals. I came home with a nice pack of granola from our students that my kids immediately consumed. So I just want to thank Willard for keeping my family fed. And also Principal Albeck for your leadership and the wonderful staff that welcomed me. So and our beautiful students. So thank you so much. I really enjoyed my visit. Can't wait to be back. And I also want to thank Club de Padres at Longfellow for welcoming me to their meeting last night. I got to attend and hear some concerns about the shortened timeline that families are facing to help their students prepare for the LPAC. And similar concerns to the ones raised by Latinos Unidos of Berkeley Tonight and some of the community members, concerns around the master plan and just transparency around those issues. So it was just great to be in that space to listen from our English, you know, to the concerns of our English language learners, learn a little bit more about the LPAC process myself. So I just want to thank Willard for, you know, Longfellow for welcoming me. We had almost, you know, around 20 parents there, so it was a good crew of parents and really appreciated the discussion last night. I'm going to see a couple of messages in Spanish for those Spanish speakers that have tuned in to hear the update from the master plan. Que gracias por sus comentarios esta noche sobre el plan maestro. Hoy habrá una presentación sobre el trabajo que se ha hecho hasta la fecha, pero sus comentarios son muy bienvenidos. Yo sé que todavía tenemos que mejorar el trabajo del plan maestro. Así que si tienen comentarios en adicional después de ver la presentación hoy, por favor mándenos por escrito a la Mesa Directiva de Educación y también a nuestro superintendente que nosotros queremos saber cómo mejor apoyar a la comunidad. Así que muchas gracias por estar aquí en la presentación. Yo sé que va a haber también una presentación al DILAC sobre el plan maestro. Así que tienen varias opciones para poder dar sus comentarios, pero siempre nos pueden escribir. I'm looking forward to the various discussion items on the agenda, including concerns about the state lifting the indoor mask mandate in K-12 schools. Thank you, everyone, for your emails. I have received them. I have read them on, you know, both sides of this issue and I'll save my substantive comments for tonight's discussion. And since the last board meeting, just wanted to update the community that I've been hard at work partnering with state leaders on ensuring that schools continue to have the financial resources in place to implement COVID-19 mitigation strategies in our schools next year, should we need to. Hopefully not, but we never know. And so in the event that we have to, that there's another surge, I'm proud to have partnered on February 22nd with Senator Richard Pan to announce SB 1479, which would authorize additional resources to implement COVID-19 testing programs. So if you picked that up in the news, it was great to partner with Senator Pan and a lot of other school districts who are supporting this kind of work. A lot of the bigger school districts in the state. And yeah, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. That's all I'll say. And I'm looking forward to the discussion.
Thank you, Director Vasudev. Vice President Babitt.
Well, I just want to say I agree with Marty Tatum. He's on point. We need to take his recommendations that I don't have to do this timer anymore. But thank you all for coming and I'm looking forward to our detailed discussions. And please read his emails. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice President Babitt. I'll go to myself for comments. Just thank you all so much for coming and participating. We've had an increase in attendees tonight, I'm sure, because you're interested in all of the hot topic things that we will talk about this evening. But as always, thank you for sacrificing your time, your sleep, or any other work duties that you have to do to be here. So thank you for being here this evening. I'm going to follow Director Vasudev's train and say Happy Women's History Month to all of the women that I am here on the dais with, as well as the supporter of women, Director Alper and Superintendent Stevens. But I join on this team of directors with some fabulous, bold, strong, smart and independent women. And I feel really blessed and honored to share this dais with you all. So Happy Women's History Month to you all and to all of the women in the district who are making it happen. Superintendent Stevens, it is now time for your public comments.
Just one second. We don't want to miss our student direct.
I am so sorry.
Hopefully she's going to wish everyone happy prom.
Ms. Muscarena Swan, I apologize.
That's okay. I know I wasn't here last time. So yeah, I'll make my comments brief as well. I'd also just really like to thank everyone who came and voiced their feelings and opinions today at public comment, especially all the students out there. And I'd like to really reemphasize, I've talked to a couple of students in the past few weeks who had ideas and thoughts about the school board. And please reach out to me via email on my Instagram. I believe my email is on the school board website and my Instagram is just Anjuna M. School Board. And we can schedule a time to discuss any ideas and feelings that you had. I really want to keep voicing all of your guys' ideas. And yeah, so I know we all have busy schedules, so just reach out to me and we can schedule a time to talk. And I also am looking forward to all of the discussion items later on, especially around the new masking policies. So yeah, and Happy International Women's Month.
Thank you, Sin, Director Muscarena Swan. As Superintendent Stevens.
Thank you so much, President Brown and board members. I'm going to keep my remarks relatively short. I'd like to call out, as I have a couple of times through the pandemic, one of our exceptional employees, somebody who's going to be leaving the district at the end of this month. Folks may not have heard her name, but Mary Kong has been an exceptional performer for us in the realm of contact tracing now for better than a year. She's been holding down more than her fair share of this contact tracing work and making us a highly functional district with regard to communication as it relates to COVID transmission. So to Mary, thank you very much on behalf of all of us. You've really made a difference for us and we wish you well in your grad school endeavors. I'd also like to just point out what I thought was an exceptional first-time meeting that took place last week. We had a citywide convening of all of our early childhood education providers hosted by BUSD. So I had a chance to meet with Beatrice Leva Cutler in her role as Executive Director of Bahia. We will know her name from the school board. And she brought along about a dozen of her early childhood education providers. We came together to discuss the implementation of the state's new universal pre-K legislation, which over time will expand district programming down to four-year-olds here in Berkeley. So I'm looking forward to more of these conversations and really thank Beatrice Leva Cutler for her leadership in pulling together this remarkable network of providers. For Berkeley families, I hope that you'll look out for a letter that went out from me yesterday. This is a letter specific to the district's budget building process for the 2223 school year. A number of public comments this evening had to do with budget items and aspirations that the board will either maintain or create budget lines for particular projects. Included in the letter that went out just yesterday is a survey that we're asking all of our community members and staff to participate in. This will help us define priorities and build a budget that is reflective of the community's aspirations. For folks who would like to learn more about our budget, we are hosting a Budget Town Hall next week, Thursday, March 15th at 5:00. This is a virtual town hall, so it's easy to attend. The Zoom link for that meeting went out in the same letter and will be available on our website. So please consider contributing to any one of, sorry, to the budget conversation. And then please tune into board meetings as we continue discussions about the state of the 2223 board budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to you, President Brown. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Stevens. Our board directors, we are now going to move to the agenda item to approve the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Moved by Director Alper. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Vasudev. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the role?
Director Muscarena Swan.
Yes.
Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Alper.
Yes.
Director Vasudev.
Yes.
President Babitt.
Yes.
President Brown.
Yes, thank you. We will now move on to our discussion items for tonight's board meeting with our first being the CDPH school masking guidance. As many of you all are aware, on the 28th of last month, the CDPH, the California Department of Public Health issued new guidance for the use of face masks that completely terminates the universal masking requirements for K-12 and for childcare settings after March 11th, which is this Friday. And so we will have a discussion around this update as far as the new guidance around masking. And so I'm going to invite Superintendent Stevens to please come.
Great. Thank you very much, President Brown. And I, in turn, am going to invite my colleague Trish McDermott, who's our senior communications official officer, to join us. I'll share my screen and then I'm going to turn the microphone over to Trish as she'll walk us through the presentation and then both Trish and I are available for questions afterwards.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Trish.
Hello, welcome everyone and thank you, Dr. Stevens. I know we have a lot going on, so I am just going to jump in very quickly and move through this presentation. So this presentation looks at the new guidance and the district's decision relative to that guidance. We'll also look at new cheering system that helps us understand disease level in the county. And we'll also update just COVID status in our schools overall right now. Next slide. So this is now how the CDC on a county-wide basis is evaluating and reporting disease level. It looks at hospital beds, hospital admissions and new cases. It's a little different than what they were doing before and it weighs hospital beds and hospital admission a little more heavily. We're currently in the medium level. All of our surrounding communities are in the green or low level. We were green and the county tells us we will be green again, although Alameda County had some, a large batch of cases that inadvertently were not entered into the system from quite some time ago and they were entered last week. And so it just temporarily moved us up. Next slide. One back. As President Brown mentioned, on February 28th, the California Department of Public Health essentially rescinded, sorry, let me say that differently, said that after March 11th, they would strongly recommend, but no longer require in childcare and K-12 settings that both staff and students mask. This is in line with what the CDC was also recommending for counties with low to medium transmission level. And along with this recommendation came the reminder that there are many other levels of risk mitigation strategies, including vaccinations and testing ventilation, and also staying home when not feeling well that continue to be ineffective and effective. Next slide. On March 1st, the governor then signed executive order N 5-22, which essentially updated the Cal OSHA emergency temporary standards to no longer require unvaccinated workers to mask indoors. It continues like the CDPH to strongly recommend masking indoors. It also requires employers to provide masks upon request by employees. The district has been doing this and will continue to do this. And then it extends the ETS until May 5th. Next slide. And just to clarify, school buses are actually considered school settings, which means that beginning March 14th, masks won't be required on buses. They don't fall under the federal public transportation masking requirements, which does still require masking on trains and buses and planes. And then CDPH is still recommending that we optimize airflow by opening windows on buses when it's practical to do so. Next slide. So then on March 3rd, the city of Berkeley came out with a health order that essentially aligns with the state. So same thing, after March 11th, in our K-12 schools, masking will be strongly recommended, but no longer required. They did in that offer remind us that surges could call for quick changes, which could include a new requirement to mask. They also clarified the 10-day period. This is the period either during an isolation when someone actually has COVID or during a quarantine after an exposure where students are asked to mask. And that would be masking when they return to school. But if you have COVID, of course, you should be masking when you're around anyone, even at home. And so that is now a strong recommendation, which means a student could have COVID, could be home for five days, could then test negative and return to school on day six and would be strongly recommended to mask, but not required to do so. It's a little different for staff because Cal OSHA actually requires masking during that 10-day period. Next slide. Our health officer in Berkeley then also provided some additional guidance to families. Families should consider their own medical risk at home for their students and for other members of the family who may be vulnerable when they are making their personal masking decisions. If a child does have a health condition, if they are immunocompromised, the recommendation is that families speak to their medical provider about masking choices. And then the city was strongly encouraging parents and guardians and school staff to talk with students about how we all should be respecting the decisions that other students and really staff as well are making relative to this new guidance. Next slide. So on Monday, the school district then also announced that we were aligning with the state, with the city of Berkeley, and also with the county who also aligned with the state. So while BUSD will strongly recommend indoor masking at all of our schools and also all of our facilities through the end of this school year, beginning March 14th, indoor masking will no longer be required for district students and district staff. And I would add other individuals who might be on campus, that could be volunteers, et cetera. And then we just look at some other metrics right now relative to COVID in our schools. We're continuing to see a decline in case rates. And in fact, cases last week were back to our pre-Omicron level and every indication is. and every indication is that will be somewhere around nine cases this week as well. We are continuing to test in our schools. You'll see that we've made some changes to testing. On February 14th, we went from twice weekly testing, which was a response to the surge, to once weekly testing in our schools as the surge was in fact behind us thankfully. And then on February 28th, at Berkeley High School, we moved from English class testing to after-school testing on Tuesdays and Thursdays and morning testing on Mondays. Next slide. Just a reminder that masking is one of many risk mitigation strategies and the strategies are still in place at our school. We were able to update the percent of our 12-plus students who are vaccinated to 87% as of now. And we're working now to upgrade, update the records for our 5 to 11s. We continue to work with the city of Berkeley to host vaccination clinics and to promote clinics that they are providing. 92% of our staff are vaccinated. We are continuing, continuing our testing program. That includes testing at Berkeley Adult School. And we now do expect to have at-home tests available for all of our staff and all of our students during spring break. That was highly effective during winter break and we're happy to know that we are going to be able to continue that program during spring break. We are continuing to contact trace. We have moved to the CDPH's group contact tracing model. We continue to run our air purifiers, our air handling systems that have been upgraded to encourage ventilation in classrooms through open windows and doors and to make masks available at all of our schools and at other district sites. Just a reminder that we have been rolling back risk mitigation strategies and allowing more activities on our campuses. So in February, we opened up indoor field trips, overnight field trips, staff travel, in-person staff meetings. The photo is a recent meeting at Longfellow. It's been really fun for us to sit together and see each other's faces in our meetings. School events are now allowed. There's a preference for outdoors, especially if those are larger events. Vaccination status will not impact students attending prom or other dances, nor will it impact anyone attending graduation. Next slide. As you know, on February 28th, we removed the requirement to mask outdoors for our students and staff. It is still strongly recommended. These are photos from Oxford just the other day. What I saw is a large group of students, these were, I think, fourth and fifth graders outside playing together, many masked, some unmasked, all seeming to be fine interacting with each other. Next slide. So there's good news also on the masking front. I think we've all known for a long time, public health has been telling us that if we wear a mask, we protect those who are around us if we happen to have COVID. But there's new research out now that's speaking to the efficacy of masks for the wearer to protect the wearer from others who have COVID. So there's various protection levels based on the mask you are wearing. But the data is definitely showing, yeah, if you're concerned about getting COVID, especially as these masking rules change, not only at school, but just in society overall, the option to wear a mask remains for you as an individual, a very strong risk mitigation strategy. Next slide. I think the superintendent and certainly I want to thank many people in the community who have shared their thoughts and urged us to understand what they're experiencing as we are evaluating guidance and working to implement and follow guidance in our schools. It's clear that we don't all think the same and that we have concerns that can be quite different. But as a community, I think we'll continue to work together to address those. And I think this guidance and the focus on strongly recommending masking and also helping us to understand and respect the choices of others is really a good one for the school district. So thank you for the feedback. Keep giving us feedback and I think we have one more slide. So on March 4th, in our schools, thumbs up on masking, thumbs up on not masking. And we are always stronger together as a community.
Thank you so much, Ms. McDermott, for that wonderful presentation. At this time, board colleagues, you have the opportunity to ask questions to both Ms. McDermott and Superintendent Stevens or offer ideas, suggestions or feedback that should be raised in front of the community. As their board director, who would like to begin? Director Alper?
Thanks, President Brown. I just want to make a quick comment. Ms. McDermott, thank you so much for, for that presentation and for all your work. And I just want to, I guess, appreciate the, the communication and the decision that you all made. This is something that's clear, you know, whether, whether to require masks indoors is clearly a decision that's outside of the expertise of people who work for the district. And so as we've said all along, we will and need to follow the guidance of the public health experts in our community and in the state. And I'm grateful to California Department of Public Health, CDPH and our own local public health officers for giving us clear guidance here and giving us the direction to strongly recommend masks and not, not require them. And for Dr. Stevens and your staff, sort of quick and clear communication and leadership in following the public health direction and guidance that we've gotten. I know people disagree with, some people disagree with it, some people agree with it, but they're the experts that we're looking to and, and, and I appreciate their, their direction. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Alper. Next we'll go to Director Vasu Dev, followed by Director Sinai, and then followed by Vice President Babett.
Thank you, President Brown. I just wanted to thank the staff so much for putting together the presentation and especially you, Ms. McDermott. I, I see you in all these CDPH meetings and I know things are changing rapidly and really appreciate your leadership and always staying on top of the latest information and asking really important questions on behalf of our district. So I just want you to know that your work is recognized and valued very much. I am disheartened that the state took this approach, especially because there's still, you know, I hear the comments from Director Alper, but I feel that public health has not always been very clear. And for me, this is an example, right? Like there's, you, you know, masking is strongly recommended on the bus, yet transit systems, people are masking. And so feels like from a public health perspective, a bit of a conflict there. Like I, there's an inconsistency in that kind of messaging, right? If you're a student and, you know, you're taking the bus to school and Berkeley are, you know, our students at the secondary level don't busk. I'm thinking, you know, in other districts where they do and then they switch to transit, like now you have to, it's just complicated. And so there's things like that where I wish that things were more aligned and clearer and could be clearer. I will say that at a meeting yesterday with the California Department of Public Health in various school districts, they held some office hours. And what was interesting, today, the, the CDPH released new guidance on COVID-19 public health guidance for K to 12 schools. And they show this graph and the graph has four categories around masking. One where it's showing, you know, masking is required. Now it's, it's moved to strongly recommended. And then there's a recommended category and then there's optional. And yesterday at the office hours, they really stressed, we want to make sure that you communicate to your districts that masking is not optional, that it is still strongly recommended. So I think there's still a lot of nuance with the public health messaging. I'm still looking for more clarity myself, because, you know, there's, and I really do hope that we can continue to talk to our local public health department to make sure that if, if the messaging is strongly recommended, right? And, and I've seen some really good effective campaigns being launched now saying, no, I mask for the immunocompromised. I mask, you know, why, why it's still important to mask, that those kind of messages are reinforced in our schools, right? And maybe it's a conversation that we have with our local public health department, but I'd love to see Superintendent Stevens and Ms. McDermott where those conversations are around public health messaging as to why it's, it could still be important to mask, right? And I do agree that in Berkeley, we're going to see a higher percentage of students masking just because of the ethos of our district and I'm very pro-science community. But, you know, it concerns me that there's still a lot of inconsistencies in the, in the public health messaging. But thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Director Vasu Dev, for those comments. Director Sinai, followed by Vice President Babett.
Well, I echo Director Vasu Dev on wishing that the public health department was more, more clear. I feel like there's a lot of nuance that's left up to interpretation. Again, putting a school district in the position of making public health decisions. So it continues unfortunately, but I think that the direction the superintendent and staff are taking are the right ones. I think campaign and messaging and partnership with the city around what does strongly recommended mean and how do we talk about it is a great idea. I think posters around campuses, communication, our, our great social media, Trish, that you do is really reinforcing that because while they've changed the measures, COVID transmission is still higher than it was last year, higher before, than it was before Omicron. And so, you know, we can talk about the number of vaccinated people who've been infected. But the vaccinations have helped prevent more, even more people from getting infected and even more people from dying. So it's not over yet. I mean, I've had this conversation with folks at work. Everybody is exhausted. We're all relieved that the masks, masks are now strongly recommended versus mandated. But I think we have to stress the strongly recommended for the people that are vulnerable that we heard from tonight. I went through the emails that we've received and have been reading them, but I also bucketed them because everybody who writes is very firm in their position and, and rests their position on science, whether they're for masking or against masking. And when I counted it out, it, it is pretty split. It, it went a little bit more, and I didn't duplicate count. You know, if you emailed me five times, you only got counted once. But it is not overwhelmingly one side or another. And so that is going to force the patience and the tolerance and the respect on our school sites. We heard from one parent today who said that his, his son had been bullied because of his vaccination status. Is whatever people's decisions are and whatever judgments people might have, it cannot play out on the playground. It cannot play out in the classroom. And I think that's up to the adults to monitor. And so I think it puts a heavy burden on all of us to make sure our families and our students know what we're expecting from both strongly recommended. But if they don't, you know, either way, like the, the picture that Trish, I think you showed, you know, the, the emoji that masked or, or unmasked is we have to be living together in, in concert with each other and, and with mutual respect. We'll do a lot of things in our lives that are different from other people. Now masking might be one of those things and we have to be tolerant of each other. Meanwhile, we have to be protective of our most vulnerable communities and we have to think beyond ourselves. So whether your position is firm on one side or the other, try to put your feet in the other person's shoes so that we can be understanding of each other. And I would like to talk, Dr. Stevens, I think what, we heard a lot of feedback today about the remote learning and what the future of remote learning, particularly when we're saying masks are not mandated and we have vulnerable families. And I know while somebody said, there's no reason to stop the independent study or remote learning, the reason is whether or not the budget will allow for it and whether state, you know, whether the state budget will permit for it. And so I think as we advocate for state funding, we need to make sure that, I agree that I'd like to see the remote learning stay in some way for another year at the level that is appropriate for the students who need it. But we need to make sure that, that there's funding for it.
And my, if I can, I might jump in and just sort of elaborate on this topic of, of the virtual learning academy. So we, as we did sort of on several topics related to COVID, we went a step further in Berkeley than most districts. The state did require that districts make independent study available to families who would like it. That was at the beginning of this academic year. We created a virtual academy that essentially replicated the distance learning program from that first year of the pandemic. We had initially about 50 to 60 families enrolled in that program. It was three teachers plus a special education teacher and some ancillary support. As vaccines became available at the elementary level, we saw enrollment in that virtual academy wane down to an enrollment now of about 20 students, still staffed at about four and a half staff members. So the total program costs the district right now about $450,000 would be a significant budget investment to extend that program for a year. We were able to use COVID funding this year. If we're intending to extend that virtual academy, we'll need to locate another revenue source. And that would likely add to the overall sort of spending picture from the general fund for next year. So we have these conversations in front of us. I certainly wouldn't say that they're, they're finished. And we'll have to do some, I think all of us, some careful consideration of the overall budget priorities as we move into next year. Having said that, independent study remains, just as it has for many years prior.
Vice President Babett?
Yes, thank you for that update and clarification, Dr. Stevens. And thank you to all of my colleagues for your insightful comments. I just wanted to basically piggyback and say that all of the arguments that we've received to and for the masking indoors discussion really just lead to the personal choice is a great option. And I just want to encourage families to really tell your child why, why, what is the why for your family? Why you choose the mask on or the mask off? And really have faith in your child that they will support the needs of your family. I've been so pleased by our students who really have taken on this responsibility to keep others safe and to follow the guidelines as we've asked them. And so as we move towards this suggestion of strongly recommended, please encourage your children to understand the why. Why are you making this choice within your household, within your families? And then to address the anti-bullying, which I think is a very serious issue, we really need to have a strategy on how we reinforce our three Bs, right? I was at Rosa Parks with my two children for 10 years and it was always the three Bs, be safe, be respectful, be responsible. And so to see when our children get to the high school level and to hear about fights and other things happening, particularly around this one issue around your vaccination status is quite disheartening. And so we can't not take it seriously as a district in our messaging and our, and our intentional discussions and advisory periods with our teachers and all of the different ways we try and reach into our students, just to remind them of those, of those three Bs and the importance of personal choice and being respectful of everyone's personal choice. Dr. Stevens, thank you for your letter and those closing comments that you made. I hope that everyone will read those closing comments because it is exactly the sentiment that we should move forward with as a community. And thank you, Trish, for all your hard work.
Thank you, Vice President Babett. Student Director Mascherini Swan?
I don't have any comments right now.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I didn't, didn't miss out on the commenting. Thank you again, Trish and Superintendent Stevens for this presentation. I couldn't agree more with my board directors' comments, especially around the type of community we want to continue to be and aspire to be. The, the comments this evening around bullying, as well as what was received through email is a bit disheartening. And I know that we as a community really rely on, on respect and treating each other with respect. And so my hope is that the comments that were said by all of our board directors do not fall on deaf ears and that our community will rise to the cause, to be respectful of the choices that all of our community members decide to make those for their families and some for individuals. In addition to that, Director Sinai, you took the idea right out of my head around the importance of a campaign. Why we are, for those of us who are still choosing to mask, why masking is happening? Why we are respecting the choice of others? And so Superintendent Stevens and Trish McDermott, I think, in addition to the recommendations made by the board members, I think we would absolutely need something like that to go out to our communities over the weekend to prepare for their, prepare for. to prepare for their prepare for their interest coming back to school on the 14th and in preparation for this this guidance. In addition to that, I'll go to Ms. Moskatanis Swan, who now has a comment.
Oh, you can finish your comments. I just.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I really agree that important, like the importance of education and just open conversation around it. I was lucky enough to have a conversation in one of my classes around masking, and it was really interesting and educational just to have that kind of open dialogue. And I think that that's those the kind of conversations that are really important to have. And I think it's also just a really important model to set for students that those kinds of conversations are normal and important to be having in our communities. You know, like we had some, I had some students who expressed that they were they felt more comfortable keeping their mask on because they had immunocompromised family members. And then we had others who were, including my teacher, who were very excited about the prospect of being able to speak without wearing a mask and see one another's faces, both of which are very real and common and important perspectives. And I think just the importance of like, I think, just open dialogue and open communication and education, given that this is a place for learning and education, is just going to be really important as we navigate through this because it's a decision that's going to have to be made at one point or another. And I think that the way that we navigate through it and the way that we just continue to value community and relationships and open dialogue throughout is really important and really will set a precedent for how we navigate through these differences and challenges as they, you know, continue to arise.
Absolutely. Thank you, Student Director Moskatanis Swan. I'll now go back to Director Sinai, and I just want to give a reminder to our board colleagues that we have four other discussion items and two action items. So keep that in mind with your comments.
I just wanted to remind folks that I think the director of the CDC, as well as other public health officers, have talked about be ready with your mask in your back pocket because it ebbs and flows with surges, you know, and that this is, and I think there's so much pushback when a decision gets made and then in three months or two weeks or whenever, it has to pivot. So I think flexibility is the other aspect, you know, in other word, that we need to keep remembering throughout this pandemic as it as it hopefully is waning. But it might be the case in three weeks and a month, in the summertime, in the fall, you know, we need to bring the mask back out and it might be mandatory. So I just want to remind folks around that flexibility.
Thank you so much for the reminder, Director Sinai. Thank you again, Superintendent Stevens, and thank you so much, Trish, for joining us this evening and for all of your hard work these past couple of years now as we move through through the pandemic and now we are at this this different point that we haven't been at before. And so thank you for your your work and for for continuing to support us in the ways that you have. Thank you. Good evening. For our next discussion item, you will see Superintendent Stevens, as well as Associate Superintendent Aurelio, present options related to the possible launch of a strategic planning process. And so the discussion and the presentation that we will see will include a variety of parameters around strategic planning, as well as a possible timeline. And so in tonight's conversation, the board will provide direction to staff with a focus on the question, should Berkeley Unified School District launch a strategic planning process? And if so, what are the board parameters of this process? And so I'm going to ask Superintendent Stevens, as well as Associate Superintendent Aurelio, to please come with their presentation.
Thanks so much, President Brown. You did an excellent framing. I really appreciate it. So we're just going to launch right into this presentation. So I am joined by my colleague Ruben Aurelio, who's the Associate Superintendent of Education Services. What we hope to do is just sort of lay out some parameters, kind of some concepts about a possible strategic planning process. We do all of this with the intention of eliciting the feedback of the board, both to gauge the board's interest in engaging in a strategic planning process, but then also to help us define the parameters of that process. This really is a discussion item, assuming that the board directs staff to continue in this direction. Mr. Aurelio and I will continue with our colleagues to flesh this out, to develop possible plans and to bring it back to the board for approval. So we hope to do this. Again, we're seeking direction by describing possible elements of a strategic plan, articulating some of the challenges with our current plans for plotting the district's overall direction, describing some of what this year has taught us around our current planning. As a reminder, we are guided by this this mission statement. Now, the mission of the Berkeley Unified School District is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Aurelio.
And good evening, President Brown, School Board, Community. Since the first time speaking this evening, I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight. And it is Women's History Month, and just want to quick shout out to my wife and my mother. So they're watching, you know, they're very important in my life. And as we jumped in, I just want to share a couple of elements of strategic planning in general. And it's just really important that we start to think through why we would want to engage in this work this year and at this moment in time. And it's really about getting alignment within our systems. We in Berkeley Unified have a tremendous amount of fantastic work initiatives, programs, and it's really about bringing all those different programs under real alignment so that we are focused and making sure we're maximizing all those different elements. So you can see a couple bullet points here that are outlined, just really bringing clarity to the work, bringing a focus to the work and ensuring the ensuring the coherence across the different departments and schools. We can move to the next slide, Dr. Stevens. Thank you. It is important that we are, we do understand that we are coming out of a pandemic and some real stressful times. And it's important to to reflect on what we've learned so far this year and over the past two years. We are still recovering, and it's really important to to note that. And that's going to impact how we continue to plan. We know that our decisions should be anchored in a true focus and plan and that we want to make sure that those that focus and plan is clear. We also know, and we've learned, that we need to improve on how we measure our success. Everything from our different initiatives, student academic performance, social emotional learning, all of those elements, we want to make sure we're constantly improving and reflecting on the work that we do. Next slide. This table here just really outlines some key components of what strong strategic planning would include. As you can see, it is a long-term plan. We would suggest somewhere between three to five years. It shows really clear path forward and the elements that we would use to measure the goals that are created. It is big picture. We need to make sure we're anchoring our work on the ultimate goal, reflecting back on that mission statement of Berkeley. We all know that really solid strategic plans engage all of the community, all the key educational partners and everywhere from students to staff to parents. We we have a lot of plans in Berkeley already, so we don't disregard that. We actually make sure that we draw from those existing plans. That's really key in the work. Those plans that we currently have are important. I'm going to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. We know that any plan we draw up as a district has to be focused on the key equity challenges. We have an LCAP, which is our Local Control Accountability Plan. And we know that's a component of a strategic plan. We know that has to be a little more broad than the LCAP. And then, of course, we have to be sensitive to the fact that we are coming out of this pandemic and there are new challenges and needs that we must reflect. I think it's also important to note what strategic planning isn't in education. And there is a difference between strategic planning in business and strategic planning in education. And we know that successful plans are not top-down. They really need to be built on consensus, bottom-up, as we like to say. And then that we are moving beyond short-term initiatives, really thinking long-term. And they are not fixed. We know that the best plans can be adapted and changed. It goes beyond a list of projects and, of course, is not insensitive to the context and capacity of the teams we have here in Berkeley. And with that, Dr. Stevens, I believe I'm going to turn it over to you for possible timeline.
Great. Thanks so much. So we've laid out what sort of a conceptual timeline might look like. We propose this really as a straw man, simply for the sake of collecting feedback from the board. So in this particular version, we define the sort of planning process in three phases. First phase to take place just in the closing months of this school year. We've listed a couple of the key milestones in that Phase One, including securing a facilitator, developing an initial scope, conducting a landscape analysis and creating a preliminary set of goals. From August to December, we define that as a Phase Two in this particular model. We note that at that point, we know there will be a new superintendent joining the district. And and during that phase, we would imagine continued engagement as well as revision of the scope and goals, potentially even drafting some priorities. Phase Three, from December to March, we understand that this is another point of transition where we'll have new board members cycling onto the board. And in that third short phase, we imagine some final engagement and revision and final approval by the board. We should note that it's really at that point that we're trying to connect the planning process timeline and the budget building timeline so that they become one and the same by by spring of 23. So we'd also hope that you would share your thinking with us about what elements we may have missed in this presentation. If there's something that you feel that we've omitted, we hope that you'll let us know those things. And then a note about costs. We imagine that there will be some costs associated with this plan. We're not at a position yet that we could estimate those costs. It depends a little bit on the parameters that we define for this planning process. But assuming that we were to be directed this evening to initiate this sort of planning for this process, we would also then begin to identify one-time revenue for the project and any expenses associated with this project would need to return to the Board of Education for explanation and approval. So just to reiterate, we're looking for sort of three points of direction from the board this evening. One, should we begin this work? Does this make sense from the perspective of each individual board member? What elements of the strategic planning process that we presented this evening resonate with you as a member of the board? And what are we missing that you'd like us to take away and factor into our planning? With that, thank you very much, and we look forward just to listening in and taking close notes as the discussion ensues.
Thank you so much. Board directors who would like to begin our discussion tonight? Director Rassider?
Yes, I just wanted to thank our Associate Superintendent and Superintendent for the presentation. I'm personally really excited by this project. I think it's very needed in our district. And I think, you know, right now, a lot of districts have felt like they're they've just been reactive, right? In the time of a pandemic, we haven't had a time to breathe, like we've been, you know, just reacting to the next thing. And so I had the pleasure of attending the Masters in Governance Training with CSBA a couple of weeks back and got to hear the opinions of various school board directors and superintendents from across the state. And a lot of them were thinking exactly what we're thinking right now. You know, we need a strategic plan. Many districts had one that had gone to this. And there were directors from places like Vesalia, and they had they had a plan, and they were there to refine their plan, right? And we talked about just feeling like, you know, we're all responding to this reactive environment that school districts are operating under right now. So I personally love, love the idea of a strategic plan. I think in terms of, you know, the questions, the specific questions. I guess the last thing before I go into my questions that I'll say about the CSBA training is that they really stress that for governance to work best for, you know, a school district and to effectively be able to establish successful priorities, we really need a strategic plan, an LCAP, and the superintendent, the superintendent's evaluation, and alignment with those three things with the strategic plan, the LCAP, and the superintendent's evaluation. So alignment on metrics, you know, alignment on what our district defines as success. And so I thought that was really important, that CSBA, you know, reinforced that as part of the training. I would say that, should we begin? Yes. Which elements resonate to me? I think, you know, this idea to step back and to have something broader that unites all of our wonderful equity-related plans that we have in the district, right? There's a lot of wonderful work that we've done, but we need like a broader umbrella for equity issues. And I'd say something that stood out to me as kind of missing is the slide where it says what it isn't. And I don't know if you, if we can pull it up again, Associate Superintendent, but this, there's a slide that says like what the what the plan isn't. And I didn't see, and maybe I just looked at it very quickly, but I didn't see community as part of that slide. And so that, to me, worries me a little bit because I think for any strategic planning process, particularly in Berkeley, you know, as part of our ethos as a district, community engagement, community input is really important. And so making sure that that's a key element of the plan would be my my only feedback in that in that slide of where it says, you know, what what it isn't. But other than that, thank you both for your thinking for this work. And I'm excited about about getting started. So thank you.
Director Sinai?
Yeah, thank you for doing all your work on this and for a great framing of the presentation. And so I guess the couple of questions or comments that I would like to raise is, I think I have a little bit different interpretation of the LCAP because I actually think the LCAP is the broad plan. I I just went back and looked at the goals. It's huge. And it covers multiple areas from instruction to engagement to academic performance, to teacher recruitment. So and it has metrics and goals. It has a lot of them. So to me, what I think is most useful right now is not another grandiose plan that kind of reassesses a lot of these things because equity is what drives the LCAP. The prioritized students are what drive the LCAP. And so the question to me is priorities, is what in the LCAP do we want to say? And I was just talking to Superintendent Stevens about this because I'm doing the same thing in my in my job is we as staff, we have to measure everything. We we look at a lot of data, we monitor, but for the purposes of the board and the senior leader, we're going to elevate certain things that we're going to make sure as a community, we're dogging day, you know, not daily, but you know, quarterly or monthly. So to me, the strategic part is of the LCAP is what is it we want to highlight? And then the other thing that really resonated with me in the slides is this issue that we all, we have a lot of, I think it's called issue-specific plans. How do those plans roll up to the priorities that we set with the LCAP? So if we say, you know what, in 2022 through 2024, we really want to put a high-value mark on math, you know, math achievement for African-American or prioritized students as an area that we've been hammering on for like ever. So in the African-American Success Plan, in the CSIS, in the this, what is it in those plans that are going to help us reach that goal? So, you know, to me, there's a little bit of like looking at it maybe just a little bit differently and using what we've already done to heighten those priorities. And again, that doesn't mean those other things aren't important and that we on a daily basis as teachers and educators and staff and administrators aren't going to continue doing it. But there are certain things that we're going to say, you know what, we're going to move the needle on this. We're going to put a lot of resources in it, and all of our plans are going to help us lead up to that. So that's kind of like how I think it's also a little bit more manageable than kind of doing a whole nother plan. So those are some thoughts.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Vice President Babett?
Thank you, and thank you for this discussion and for bringing this forward. And I just want to appreciate our leadership team for really wanting to guide us into focused priorities, which I think is the ultimate goal of the strategic plan. And I also think that when we said what it is, we said it's a long-term plan, three to five years. And so I think just under that scope of perspective, we should really make sure that our superintendent is has been confirmed as we start something that that person is ultimately responsible for implementing, a vision that they are ultimately responsible also for helping us to cast. But in the interim, as Director Sinai was saying, I do think it's I do think it's important that we look at what have we done in the implementation of our past plans? Which prohibited us from reaching those goals, those metrics that we've already established. Because I can tell you right now, we will come up with a fantastic strategic plan. Every I will be dotted, every T will be crossed on paper. And the implementation of all of that is where it will, the gaps will become very glaring. And I'm saying that because this is what I've seen from our LCAP plan. It was recognized nationwide. But the gaps around implementation, what I would actually prefer is if we look at what are the things in each department? What are the problems we already have? Because when we get to implementation, it's the problems we already have that's going to stop us from reaching that progress. So how do we name by each department? What are the issues? HR, what are your issues? Business services, what are your issues? Ed services, what are your issues? Facilities, what are your issues? Communications, what are your issues? And what are your targeted goals just within your department? To address the current problems we already have. We've heard a lot about hiring teachers during public comment faster. How do we start with that? Because every plan we're going to implement is going to require staff and students, right? So what are those things we can fix before we start coming up with new ideas, which are very, they're really going to look very similar to the goals we already have in our LCAP plan? Because I can't see what's actually missing from that, right? We talk about it's an equity-focused plan. We're all equity-focused in our in as board members, we're equity-focused in our work. You know, the equity rubric is in there, the equity rubrics, we've yet to determine how to implement the equity rubric. So I would say a good place to start, number one, would be if each department were to come up with some short-term goals to fix some of the issues that we've heard and that we know exist for years. And then, secondly, I just want to say with community engagement, we're tapping into the community a lot already. We're tapping into them for the African-American Success Framework. We're tapping into them for the CSIS Plan. We're tapping to them for the EL Master Plan. We're tapping into them for the Middle School Redesign. We're tapping into them for the VHS Bell Schedule. And all I keep hearing is when are you going to do something, though? You always come and ask us. But what are you going to actually do? Am I really, is this really a good use of my time? Are you really taking my feedback? So to me, to develop all of these things right now that we've done this past year and even the year before, and then to come out with another community engagement process around a strategic plan? Because it's not a top-down plan, right? It's, it's, it's not going to, we will spend more time and we will come up with a great plan. But I do not know if it's going to help us actually implement the things we just asked them, they just told us about. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Vice President Babbitt. Director Alper.
Sorry, can you, President Brown, can you come back to me?
Sure, no problem. I'll come back to you. I did have a couple student director Vasudev in this one. Did you have anything to jump in with? I did have a couple of questions, Superintendent and Associate Superintendent. More so around timeline. So I'm seeing that the timeline that has been provided to us, it's almost a year of engaging our community or engaging to find out the doing the initial engagement and the continued engagement before the final engagement of the board approval happens. And so I think my questions are around, how does that help us push the needle on what is currently happening or what some of the issues that are currently being raised by community members? Some of which we hear in public comments, some of which we receive via email. What is the plan of action to address those? As you are aware, I'm supportive of a strategic planning process. I've said it publicly, and I'll say it again. However, I do understand the dire need to kind of get some priorities and some goals now. And so maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in on this. And then, Ruben, I welcome you to do the same. We designed this timeline sort of thinking about what we know to be two key transitions taking place in the next eight to 10 months. So one, we know is the arrival of a new superintendent in July. And then the other, we do know that there will be some changes in board leadership, or sorry, board composition as well in November. Those two things are known quantities. So we proposed this slightly longer timeline to account for those transitions, hoping then that the board would react to the wisdom or maybe folly of having that long a timeline. In terms of sort of, you know, being able to get the work done now, there's all kinds of accomplishments that I think staff can rightly point to that we've been able to accomplish under these very difficult circumstances. I think for staff, I'd be accurate in saying that the sort of key prospect in doing a strategic planning process is prioritization. And that is to be able to focus down on what I would say is a manageable set of tasks during one period of time so that staff isn't spread as thin across as many projects as we find ourselves to be right now. So that, I think, is the sort of promise for staff. Whether that's done in a short timeline or a quick timeline, I think probably staff is agnostic to, so long as the ultimate goal is prioritization and the creation of a more manageable workload.
Dr. Stevens, I would echo that. And from the perspective of the site level, I think it's really important that, you know, I've heard throughout this year, especially with our leaders, just how full they are right now and just, they were so worried about the next thing, and that's really stressful. So really, really getting focused on those priorities is going to be key as we move back into this next phase of the pandemic, right?
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Associate Superintendent and also Superintendent Stevens, which is, I think, why my question was around maybe a possibility for an abbreviated or targeted strategic plan that addresses those concerns around workload, around the inability to be focused or the inability to focus on the priorities maybe as outlined in the LCAP and also implementation, as was mentioned a little bit earlier. Director Alper.
Thanks, President Brown. Yes, I'm supportive of the strategic plan. The things that resonate to me most are what a couple people just said about prioritization and also I think Director Sinai mentioned alignment of metrics across our different sort of governing guiding documents. Both of those seem like key key things that are that are kind of missing right now. And from what I've heard from Dr. Stevens and Associate Superintendent Aurelio would be really welcomed by the staff who are tasked with implementing all the many programs that we funded and created. And so I think that that sounds like something that will really help us implement the board's vision. I'm sort of agnostic on the timing and the exact structure. I just don't, you know, I don't know what would be best and defer to, you know, the thoughtful you know, deliberations that you all have made. To me, the, to me, one thing that's missing or that I'd love to see is some examples of of what you think Associate Superintendent or Dr. Stevens are good models for strategic plans from other districts. You can Google it and see a bunch of strategic plans, but it's hard to know which ones, you know, do the things that are in the don't do slide or or the ones that are, you know, the kind of models that Director Vasudev mentioned, CSBA talks about. So I'm sure there are ones out there. And if there's some point along the process where you can kind of share what a end product would look like that would meet the goals that you see for it, I think that would be helpful probably for everybody.
Any other comments from the board? Associate Superintendent Aurelio or Superintendent Stevens? I believe the board gave some direction. Do you think it would be helpful for us to go around again, or have you received the direction?
Yeah, for myself, I feel like I've sort of got responses from each of the board members to the questions we ask. And I really appreciate the feedback. Ruben, are you feeling the same way at this point?
Yeah, I guess for me, I didn't like count votes or count. I need to understand, am I starting this work now? Or am I waiting? I think that's really the key direction or key direction I'm looking for around the strategic plan. That would be probably most helpful. Just the timing, the timing.
Okay. I think if anyone were directors can respond, but I think that the second questions, or the second and third question, what elements resonate and what is missing? Is what's coming up really strongly for us before we can answer the question around starting the work now? But that is just my view of it. For directors, Vice President Babbitt, is your hand is up?
Yes, I would concur with your view of it, but I would also ask that in the meantime, if we could really look at the issues that have constantly been raised and how, how we take that approach to create efficiencies. Because, you know, we don't need a whole strategic plan to create priorities within our own departments, right? You all are charged with the leadership of your department. And while we know our priorities as far as our budget spending, you know, what we're doing with our with our equity initiatives, can somebody help me prioritize how we're going to fix the problems, right? How are we going to get contracts passed more efficiently? How are we going to get staff hired more efficiently? How are we going to improve first-level instruction? How are we going to do the things in the CSIS Plan? That would be huge. If we can do that between now and June and then have that be able to roll into what we need to do for the strategic plan. Because if we come up with new initiatives and these things have not been addressed, you're not going to have time to address them and do the new initiatives. So that's the ultimate message. While I agree in the delay, I really delete. I want to make sure that actions can still be taken because we have a lot of information already around things we need to do. Thank you.
Director Sinai, then Director Vasudev and Director Alper.
So maybe I agree with what President Brown was saying. I think we gave a lot of feedback. And so I think the question is what comes back next in the sense of what the framework and the outline would be. What would be helpful, I think, is if, you know, because I think some of the things that Vice President Babbitt is talking about, like administrative functionings and efficiencies, is that one of the buckets that's in the strategic plan? I mean, we talk a lot in the board level about our academic, you know, metrics and goals. So I guess maybe the next step could be looking at some of the examples that Director Vasudev is talking about that CSBA has, helping us understand, not another 60-page plan, but what would be the buckets and priorities? And then maybe even say, here are existing plans that will help inform it. You know, and plot those existing plans into where the bucket would be. And then we could maybe say like, how elaborate or how where do we need more community feedback? Where do we have a lot of community feedback and we just need to make some recommendations on priorities? That might be a way to help us better, because what I'm a little nervous about is just blanket say, yeah, go forth on a strategic plan without really still understanding what the scope of the plan would really cover. Does that make sense?
I don't know if you're asking me, but that makes a lot of sense. And also to add to what Director Sinai was saying, also the revisiting maybe the idea of the timeline, especially around the what has been raised around like the priorities for right now and how this strategic planning process will help inform some of the priorities that we need to make or the challenges that we need to address currently. I just don't see this plan having the room for that. And so it would be great to add that. Director Vasudev and then Director Alper.
I guess if I'm hearing my colleagues correctly, it sounds like, you know, do a little bit more digging as to best practices, go through the CSBA examples. Happy to share with you both. But I, but I think timeline-wise, at least for me, coming back soon with that so that we can start the work soon. I mean, I think, and I think I heard you correctly, President Brown, that it, that, you know, to start soon, but to really go back with the feedback that that's coming out of tonight, right? And then choose some of those best practices from the samples of other districts and come back soon. I guess from my perspective, I would like the work to start sooner rather than later.
Director Alper.
Yeah, I was going to say something similar to what Director Vasudev said, like what I, what you said, Director Sinai, about what you're asking, you know, Assistant Superintendent Aurelio to do. To me, that is starting the process, you know, that's, that's what we need to do is get, get, take the feedback that we gave tonight. You know, think about it, you know, come back to us with a more fleshed-out proposal that incorporates that feedback and then like get started on it because if, you know, if the will of the board is to do this, then let's, you know, then let's do it and and do it, you know, having incorporated the direction and feedback that we gave you tonight. But if you're the Director Vasudev, if we're going to do it, let's, let's not wait. Let's start it.
Thank you, Director Alper, for your questions. Associate Superintendent or Superintendent Stevens? Are you good on your direction?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I believe so. That was a very helpful last round. We appreciate it.
I hoped it would help. Thank you so much. For our next discussion item, the California Association for Bright Language Education is providing a systemic support, coaching, and professional learning opportunity for the creation of our district's multilingual learner plan. And so tonight, we will have a presentation from Superintendent Stevens as well as Associate Superintendent Aurelio about this CAE, CADE plan. And they'll give us the progress update and where we are currently within. The board will engage around that. And so we have a number of presenters here for that tonight. And so I'm going to ask Associate Superintendent in his capacity to please introduce our fabulous presenters for tonight, and thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you, President Brown. So this evening, we have from CAVE, four presenters who are supporting our work in the development of our multilingual master plan. So with us this evening, we have Ruby Flores, Tony Hernandez, Jen Gustafson Correa, and Marga Marshall. And I'm going to turn it over. Is it you, Ruby, who's driving? Yes. Are you able to share your screen? Perfect. So I will turn it over to Ruby, and then we'll be here for questions after the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Well, I will start this off and let's say a very warm good evening to you all. Jan Gustafson Correa, CEO for CAVE, the California Association for Bright Language Education. Truly is an honor to be with you all here tonight. We've been incredibly impressed by the quality of discussion, the topics we're speaking on, and the dialogue you've had at the district. So it's been a pleasure to be with you tonight. I'm here accompanied by an amazing group of colleagues and others that are working on this project as well. And we've mentioned, we are here to discuss with you the multilingual master plan project update. And our team that has been gone working with you this school year is our, includes our Deputy Director Maria Villa, our Director of Professional Learning, Ruby Flores, who you briefly saw, will be hearing more from in just a minute. Two professional development specialists, Anibal Wadia, and then one with us tonight, Marga Marshall. Also, our Coaching and Mentoring Lead for our Parent Family Engagement Team with Project to Inspire, Tony Hernandez, is also with us. And an amazing support team member at our CAVE office, Andrea Gonzalez. So, you know, as CAVE and on behalf of our Board of Directors that are holding So, you know, as CAVE and on behalf of our Board of Directors or whole team, we're just thrilled to be with you today. And we've had some very engaging conversations with your district team, Superintendent Stevens, Assistant Superintendent Aurelio, Mrs. Stupin, and other members of your team have just been so instrumental in helping us get an understanding of what the vision, what the needs, what the what the desires are of Berkeley Unified. As you look at the needs of your English learners and of your multilingual students. So we commend you for taking this on, even as you've had a discussion around your district strategic plan, looking at what you can do to really strengthen and hear the voice of your multilingual multilingual language learners in the district. So today, our outcomes, this evening, our outcomes in this short presentation are to provide for you the goals of the multilingual language learner master plan project. And that is quite a mouthful. And we've come up with an acronym that's also a little bit of a tongue twister, but we are calling it the MLLMP, Multilingual Language Learner Master Plan Project, MLLMP. And we'll be sharing with you tonight the timeline of project implementation. We'll be providing updates on what has been happening this school year already, even in the midst of all that has been going on in our communities with COVID and other impacts. On just the progress that we're making, which we're very excited about. We'll be talking about our next steps and then questions and comments. So the first thing that I would just like to share with you tonight, as we venture into this great experience of partnering with you on your MLLMP, is is the framing of it and how do we approach this work within CAVE? CAVE is a nonprofit statewide organization that's been doing work around English learners and bilingual literacy for 47-plus years. I heard someone reference Bell versus Nichols earlier on this evening. CAVE during that time and over these many decades of work, we have really broadened and deepened our expertise in the field of multilingual and bilingual literacy education. And the framing we have from our state in that regard is something that happened in 2017. The State Board of Education of California passed the English Learner Roadmap Policy. And while we don't have time to go in depth into that tonight, what I want to share with you is the framework of this roadmap policy, the guidance that it gives us statewide about implementing programs for our students of diverse language and cultural backgrounds, their families and the educators who serve them. And the framework of the EL roadmap really provides us guidance around four guiding principles. There are a focus on on kind of environment, multilingualism, building communities that really value and support language and bringing our parents and students into that perspective. Part of the roadmap is really talking about how do we provide effective instructional strategies for teachers? So they feel confident and feel like they have the resources to meet the needs of English learner and multilingual students in their in their in their in their classrooms and throughout your communities. Also, systemically within a district and a school, how do you address those needs? And how do you work cross-system as well? And so working with you together on the multilingual learner master plan is really about putting the English learner roadmap that the California Department of Ed has brought to us in place and making it work for Berkeley, personalizing it, customizing it, hearing the voices of your community, hearing the voices of your educators, coming together and building a plan that you feel really reflects who you are and the direction that you want to go. So with that, I'm just really honored to introduce my colleague Ruby Flores, who will take us a little bit more deeply into the the roadmap and then you'll be hearing from Margaret and Tony as well. Ruby?
Yes, thank you, Jen. And as you mentioned, in the past few years, there has been a critical shift in perspective about the importance of preparing our students with the multilingual skills that they will need to be competitive in our global society. So because of this, California has embraced a multilingual stance, which is, as we know, is reflected in our English learner roadmap policy. And this shift has prompted us to also reflect on the language and terminology that we use to describe the linguistic skills of our students, learning English as an additional language. And that is the reason why we moved from calling it an English learner master plan to a multilingual learner master plan. One way to recognize and honor our students' linguistic assets is by changing the labels and the language that we use when we're thinking of our students who are not replacing their native language, but are adding to their native language. And in this process, we want to think about our students as individuals who are in the process of becoming multilingual. So that shift in perspective and language is crucial as we work to ensure equity and education for our more for our multilingual communities. We are also, part of this work has also been focused on implementing and really focusing on shared leadership. And to ensure that all of the voices of our community are included in this project, we have gathered a multilingual language learner master plan leadership team comprised of a diverse group of stakeholders who will engage in the co-creation of the Equity Focus MLLMP. It is critical that the members of the leadership team have a clear understanding of the programs, policies, strategies that will ensure academic success for our multilingual students. So it is necessary that the members of the leadership team team attend all the sessions and in their entirety, as they will also be working independently on master plan projects, collaboration work, and also contributing to the decision-making process of systems and support for multilingual learners. And with that, I will turn it over to our my colleague Maria, who will go over the project goals.
Good evening, buenas noches. In our work with Berkeley Unified, we met with the MLLMP Committee to introduce project goals and to engage the members of the community in initial discussions about the project, to gather voices of the community and to gather qualitative data to inform this leadership team. We're also working on community surveys and interviews in order to identify areas of need, level of satisfaction and level of understanding of the EL dual language program goals and objectives. Once all professional development sessions have been delivered, we will have a guided facilitation of the MLLMP using the information gathered from work group from the sessions, surveys and interviews to the community. We will also work collaboratively with action plan teams and facilitate the development of action plans for the BUSD Multilingual Language Learner Master Plan. I'm gonna pass it to my colleague, Tony. Gracias, Tony.
Thank you, thank you. And well, we have our number five would be our family engagement goal. And I'm very, I feel very honored and pleased to be able to be working. We're very proud to work with your parents in the Parent Family Leadership Program, co-empowering parents and working in partnership with this plan, with the district educators and leaders and working in a collaborative community with a common vision, of course, and a mission guiding our our students towards success and working together. And how are we doing this along with our project program, Project to Inspire? And we have our next slide. And I'd like to share with you our project update, some of the topics that we've already been able to cover. And we've been with three modules so far. Empowering the community through multilingualism, multiculturalism and the California EL roadmap as well. Providing, getting to know a little bit more of the vision of the EL roadmap, getting to know ourselves as a community as well. Also, seeing the importance of parent engagement and the different levels of parent engagement and how to be able to engage and transition in the new era of post-COVID as well. Building bridges in communication, building stronger bridges, effective communication strategies. And these are the topics that we've been able to see. And we have some parent feedback already from some of the parents that have been able to attend the sessions saying that the ideas that they are acquiring are helping them to make better decisions in their schools. Also to help them to be more conscious of being more engaged, feeling empowered about their cultural background and and core values and also connecting and communicating with their teachers, being able to connect more and knowing the importance of bilingualism. Also knowing more about the LCAP testing and reclassification and how to navigate the US system for many parents that are new to the school system. So these are some of the comments and feedback that our parents have had. And now I will pass it on.
Yes, we have had a really positive collaboration with BUSD District Leadership scheduling MLLMP professional development sessions and events as well as parent sessions. We continue meeting with district leadership to develop surveys and future interviews to analyze feedback and develop short-term and long-term action plans in response to the needs of the community. Our feedback forms at the end of each professional development session gives us information to reflect on modifications needed for future sessions. And these are some of the sessions that we have completed to date. The initial EL multilingual master plan workshop, the California EL roadmap policy, LPAC. And then collaborative work has been embedded in each session as we've been working together. And the next ones, these are the next scheduled professional learning sessions to continue the work and support of the development of the multilingual learner master plan. So sessions that will be having integrated and designated ELD, dual language foundations, components of an equity-driven multilingual learner master plan. So we do have a lot of great sessions scheduled and ready to go.
And we also want to keep in mind the feedback that we've received from our stakeholders, right, about the sessions. And we are very happy to share some of the benefits that they've they've experienced, but we're also aware of the challenges that we face this year because of the surge and because of the consequences of of COVID. So in conversations with the district, we have engaged in discussions about extending the timeline in response to all of the unforeseen challenges created by the pandemic. In order to be truly intentional about developing equities equitable systems and to ensure that we engage in an effective reflective process of creation and design that engages all key stakeholder groups, it's imperative that no critical steps or of data gathering and capacity building are rushed or skipped in the development of the master plan. We really must ensure that the master plan reflects the rigor and the commitment to high-quality education that the Berkeley community believes in. So it is, it has been, it discussed, right, that we do provide additional time into the fall to complete the project. And for that, these would be our next steps. Continue with our interview process, continue with analyzing the data that we're gathering and also the data that we have from our students. And to continue to schedule and and work through the professional learning sessions that we know are critical. To continue to work with the parents and schedule those sessions so that they can also benefit from this critical information. And to also find opportunities to meet with our stakeholder groups. As for example, on April 19th, we will be meeting with our D-LAC parents to present on the project and also provide them updates. And with that, we open it up if anybody has any thoughts, questions that we may be able to answer for you.
Thank you so much, CAVE, for for your great presentation this evening. For directors, we can begin questions. And I see the first hand that we have up is Director Vasudev.
Hi, I just wanted to thank everybody for your presentation and CAVE staff in particular. I'm also a trustee for the California Latino School Board Association. And I know a lot of my fellow colleagues on that board have worked closely with CAVE, talk very well about CAVE and your work throughout the state. So thank you so much for working with our district. I have a couple of concerns. I mean, I will say, Tony, I had the pleasure of attending our first Project to Inspire meeting and I I left very inspired. It was good. We had, I think, 17, 18 people there, was really excited to attend that session. But I my concerns are really, I guess, aimed more towards our Associate Superintendent and Superintendent. I have concerns around the way that we're engaging our English language learners, because what I'm hearing from the community, right? And yesterday I went to a meeting that was solely focused on the LPAC, was mostly focused on the LPAC. It was the Club de Padres, but there were a lot of very pointed questions about the LPAC and our families not feeling prepared, feeling very panicked that their children would be limited if they did not pass the test from electives at Berkeley High. These are eighth grade parents that were feeling very concerned and knew nothing about the master plan. And I thought, well, you know, here's 20 people that would be great to have as part of these groups. So there is a disconnect happening where I think that maybe some of the, and I don't know if the advisory team is meeting just during the day and not in the evening, but a lot of our families are saying, hey, like, you know, we want to give input on the master plan. So I'd love to know if there's a plan to have a survey for the master plan, you know, before it goes to D-LAC in addition to D-LAC, because not a lot of people attend D-LAC, right? But a survey for the sites. And I think, you know, having a couple of these meetings in the evening so that our families can attend. And also now that, you know, it seems like there's there's an opportunity to have more in-person meeting. And I would love to learn from the Associate Superintendent and Superintendent if there's a possibility of having an in-person meeting. Because I think for English language learners, that would be really important. So that's in particular to the master plan. I think there's a sense of urgency and you heard it in public comment from our group. You know, our local stakeholder group too, Latinos Unidos at Berkeley, has not been part of any of these discussions. So that to me is a red flag that if we're talking about, you know, engagement that that fits into our Berkeley model, when I hear Latinos Unidos not engaged, Club de Padres has a meeting where there's a lot of panic around the LPAC. Like, okay, there's a there's a disconnect here, right? Like, why are they not finding out our part? Why are they not engaged on the update of the master plan? And then my second point of feedback is around Project to Inspire. I know that the first meeting was really successful and that subsequent meetings, we've had a decline in attendance. And I and I really think, you know, some things we've done right. So I want to, you know, commend the district for mailing out forms and reminders to our Spanish-speaking families about Project to Inspire. But my constructive feedback would be that, you know, I love seeing the different focus areas, the areas of focus that I've seen outlined in the presentation tonight. I think those need to be accompanied with with that, you know, mailer, because our families are, you know, coming to me and saying, I don't, okay, what is this, right? Like, why should I show up? And so I think there's also a disconnect in just how we're engaging and reaching out to our English language learners. So I'd love to just think more creatively about, you know, potentially surveys, engaging a Club de Padres, that's 20 parents that are really focused on on the LPAC right now. The possibility of in-person meetings. And just making sure that some of these advisory committee meetings can happen in the evening, because that's really important for our families and make sure that we're engaging our local Latino stakeholder group.
Should I, and let me answer a couple of those. I'm gonna try my best, Director Vasudev. So I know that at the last D-LAC, and I know the multilingual leadership team has reviewed a survey that CAVE has helped us put together. It hasn't reached the final approval stage, but that survey then would get translated and sent out to our families. So there will be a survey forthcoming to gather more of that information. I know that I've already reached out to Ruby and I think we're going to be following up mostly to to debrief tonight, but also just to deep sort of as a checkpoint with the work and to see how we can expand some of that leadership team to include a greater outreach. I know we reserved some spots in the team for D-LAC representation. And timing has been really challenging. I mean, that's the just the reality. We were holding those sessions during the daytime, because that's when our staff is available to sort of come to those meetings. The other thing I want to really honor too is, you know, when we've got, when we made this contract with CAVE, we we contracted with them for a virtual space. We did not actually contract for in person, so that would be something we'd have to discuss. I don't want to commit to commit them to something in person and that's not something we contracted for. So I just want to be able to honor that as well. I do think an in-person could be helpful to engage our families. I think anytime you do events like that where you can, one, provide childcare and actually see people in person, feed them, those things always helps with that type of that level of engagement and something maybe we should be considering as well. And I do agree that the the P2I, we could do a better job of sort of just promoting the topics ahead of time. But I also, I really do want to note that we are getting parent fatigue. I think that's a real thing. We're seeing it across many of our different committees as well. Some of the turnout is coming is on a downturn. I think people are tired and I just want to, you know, honor that, that we're, their families have been through a lot over these last few months. So we want to be mindful of not overdoing it too for them.
No, I totally hear you, Associate Superintendent. I'm just going to respond really quickly to that, to the parent fatigue, because I was at a meeting yesterday with 20 parents that had never heard of this work. And so for me, that's not fatigue, that's a missed opportunity. opportunity. And so, you know, I hope we're engaging at Club de Padres, I hope we're at King, at, you know, our newcomer program, I hope we're at Berkeley High, and that we're really being intentional about the groups that we're engaging with. But thank you all, I know you do great work, and please understand this feedback is meant to be constructive, but I'm very honored that our district is partnering with Cave.
And Director Vasilev, your concerns about LPAC, and I know that's not really the topic here, but specifically, the LPAC is a very wide window, and sites do have discretion on when to test in that window. So I actually did speak with Principal for Law this morning about that. So there is an opportunity, there is an opportunity to, to sort of shift when the LPACs of schools want more time. I know that they're also trying to be mindful of not slamming our students with multiple assessments at the same time, because the smarter balance also happens in the spring. And so our EL students not only are testing for LPAC, but they also have to take the SBA. So they just want to be mindful of that.
Well, thank you so much.
If I could, President of the Board and others, just to say that there was a question in the chat, and we know, yeah, there's so many, you know, acronyms in education, and they sound similar. And so we've been talking about something called the LPAC, and that's spelled E-L-P-A-C, A-L-E-P-A-C. And that really is the proficiency exam, it's the English learner proficiency assessment of California. And that's what our state provides for us to assess the English language proficiency levels of students. And it's given to them annually, there's an initial, and then it's given to them annually. And though, that's followed along with other kinds of assessments to see the progress of students. It is confusing, though, because we also have something called LPAC, LCAP, excuse me, LCAP, which is our Local Control Accountability Plan. So just to know that the different acronyms sound similar, LCAP is what your district writes every year for your local control accountability plan, but then the LPAC is around English learners, and seeing the progress of our students and helping our teachers even understand what is that, how do you use the data from the LPAC, and then how do you instruct to help students. You heard Marga mention integrated ELD and designated ELD. ELD is English Language Development, and then we know you have wonderful multilingual dual-language immersion programs. And so we also are looking at assessments and ways to help see the progress of students, whether in a Spanish dual-language immersion or maybe another language as well. So, you know, I think part of what Marga was sharing too is that we are really providing a nice set of professional development. So we're all kind of on the same page, right? Because there's been so much going on. So just how do we make sure that people have the same information that will help us then really have the knowledge to create your master plan for the district? So I thought that was a great question. I just wanted to address that. Thanks.
Thank you for that. That was really helpful. And I think one piece that's also important is when we talk about our reclassified students, the LPAC is the test that helps us to identify that, especially because the LPAC focuses on three main areas in reading, writing, and speaking of English, and identifying English proficiency. And that's my favorite thing to administer the LPAC to my students. Vice President, Cabe?
Thank you so much, and thank you for explaining those acronyms, because I can just see the community, like, what are they talking about? And also, some people may not know that DLEC is our District English Language Advisory Committee. My question does lead to reclassification also. I just want to make sure that in your plans, how we support reclassified students is also on the radar, and how we engage with families whose students may be reclassified now, because they can surely help develop plans for those who are in the, you know, pre-reclassification status. Also, I want to get a feel for our translation needs within our district, and how many languages are we actually covering with this plan? Thank you.
Ruby, would you like to address the question around redesignations?
Yes, yeah, so this is gonna be a very comprehensive plan, right, that we will include the guidelines, right, for reclassification, but then, like you mentioned, also the supports that students will need to receive. And it is about building systems, right? We're looking at this plan not as a document, but mostly as the systems that are going to go into this document, right? The systems of support that we will be able to create and to refine, so that we know that all of our English learner groups and typologies are receiving the support that they need, and especially our students who are reclassified so that they can continue to make progress, but then there's also a plan in case we need to address any, any concerns that may arise after they're reclassified, right? So, so yes, all of this would be included into, into the plan, right? And that's why we need the time to build capacity around what is needed, and, you know, so that we can all engage in conversations of what are the best resources, what's the best plan, what are the best strategies, so that we can ensure that students are successful, not, not just as they reclassify, but also a long term as well.
Vice President, Cabe, you had a second, was it second part about the languages, the number of languages?
Yes, I'm wondering how we reach all of our multilingual families. We have several different languages, and do we have enough translation support in all of those languages to ensure that all of our English language learner families are included?
I think that's an area we can always continue to improve on, the translation. We, you know, as, as far as in-house translation, we have a Spanish language translator that does a lot of the written translation for us. And I know through our communications department, when there's other, a need for other languages, we, we sort of reach out to them, and we're able to sort of do some of that outside of our, our district, get some of that support. But it is definitely an area, as a district, that we don't have huge capacity.
Director Saini?
Thank you for the presentation and for all the work that you're doing. I'm excited about the opportunities. I've got a couple of questions. One, maybe piggybacking on the previous conversation we were having, I don't know if you were listening at all, or if you were actually, like, having dinner, is, you know, if, how you view the multilingual master plan aligning or leveraging the LCAP, and the targets and the goals that we've got for English language learners in the LCAP, which are a high priority population. So that's one question. I'll just ask my other second question, which is, I think, potentially easy to answer. If you have numbers of how many families have been actually engaged in the sessions that you've been doing? Thanks.
President Brown, is it okay if we step in to respond?
Yes, please. We're excited to have you here, because you can respond.
Great, thank you. Well, I'll, I'll begin with the first question. I'll invite my team members to contribute. And then, Tony, I know you have a lot to share in our second question as well. You know, one of the really important things within a district, and I heard it in your discussion earlier to your strategic plan, you know, but plans have to have meaning, right? You know, and of course, we have some requirements around them, but how do we make them meaningful for who we are as a district, or who we are as school sites? And so when you think of your local control accountability plan, your LCAP, that needs to reflect who you are and what you're going to be doing. Whatever you're going to be doing needs to be in your LCAP, because that's where you're putting your emphasis, and that guides how you're using your funding. And so that's a really key piece to, as you think about your LCAP, it's really putting your action, that strategic plan, that vision, all that you have into place and into practice. The way that the multilingual learner master plan falls into that then as well is that as a district who's committed to meeting the diversities of your students, you want to be sure that what you put in your multilingual language learner master plan aligns with what you have in your LCAP, and actually kind of drives what's in your LCAP through the MLLMP, and I hope I got my acronym right this time of the evening. You know, you're looking at not just students learning English, and I, I really appreciate how Ruby brought it up. It's about learning an additional language. It's not substituting language. So if a child comes to us being a Spanish speaker, or being an Arabic speaker, or being a Vietnamese speaker, or what have you, we want them to come to school and absolutely build proficiency and academic excellence in English. But along with that, because you have multilingual programs, you've also committed to say that students even grow and enhance their education even more by learning in more than one language. So through a dual-language immersion program, or other kinds of bilinguistic programs, where students really gain full proficiency in, say, English and Spanish, and have high levels of academic achievement in those languages as well. So whatever you're thinking about within your, for your multilingual learners, and your English learners, and your bilinguistic learners, and your dual-language immersion programs, definitely needs to be aligned to your LCAP and inform your LCAP, because just think about that we're talking about here, we're talking about parent surveys, and I just loved hearing about the desire for the community to want to have voice, and that's what this is all about. And we know it's been taking a bit longer with COVID and working on those details out, but we are committed to doing that. So if we're doing that through the multilingual learner master plan, excuse me, let's use that data that will help inform you with your LCAP as well. They're not separate entities, they're not separate, you know, processes per se. I mean, we'll do some distinct things, but I know that as you work with your district leadership and as a board, you'll be wanting to bring those together in your community as well. If they've given voice within building the multilingual learner master plan, you'll want to have it reflected in your LCAP as well, and to be having that, being part of those processes. I love hearing about the Club de Padres, you know, that sounds like a really engaged group of parents. And so besides informing your LCAP, they also will be part of, I hope, informing us around this planning as well, and learning along with us. So I'm, I would just say there's just a really close alignment, Director Saini, in both of those. And we would try to help at least weave those together for you and see how, as you work on your LCAP, which we're not really a part of, but we know it's all one big picture working together.
So I guess the question that I maybe drilled down a little bit is around accountability and measures, whether they're process measures or qualitative, quantitative measures. Are those in baked, are those baked in to the master plan? So it's not just strategies, but there's also some measurable outcomes that we're, we're holding ourselves accountable to?
Right. Ruby, would you like to respond to that, too?
So the goal of, and I hope I'm understanding this correctly, so the goal of the master plan is, like we've mentioned, right, to build the systems, right, is to build the systems that we will need to support our students in the different, in the, in the different areas, and for the goals that, as a district, you have for them, right? So, for example, if as a district you have goals, the goal of, you know, ninety percent of our students will reclassify by a certain time, then how do we build a system that's going to get us there, right? And so that is what needs to go into the master plan, right? It's, it's what are going to be the supports, what is going to be the systems, how are we going to collaborate, what's going to be the professional development that we're going to provide our teachers, how are we going to make sure that we're up, you know, we keep updated on the research, on the practices that are going to help us to those goals, right? So the master plan is, is the support, right, that it's going to allow you to reach the goals that you as a district set for your students, which in turn, like Jan said, right, it aligns to what are your goals that you express on your LCAP, right, and how are we working together so that through the master plan and the systems that we're creating and articulating through the master plan, so that you are reaching those goals. So that's why there is, this is a very much collaborative effort, right, of, we can't come in and tell you, oh, this is what it should look like, because you as a district, you have your own goals to meet, right, your own expectations that you have for, for the numbers, right, that you want to see your students, how many percentages and things like that. So for us, it's us coming to provide support so that you can develop those, those systems, right, and that are going to get you there.
Director, thank you, Ruby. Director Vasilev, I see your hands. Is that?
Hi, yes. Thank you so much for the robust discussion. And I love that my colleague, Director Saini, asked, similar to what I was going to ask, is around recommendations for implementation. And so is, and this is a common question that I get from DLEC, and especially now, because it's a committee that's looking both, you know, waiting to see the master plan, waiting to see the recommendations for implementation, and also giving the district feedback right now in the spring, critical feedback around budgeting priorities for English language learners in our district. And so when, is Cave going to present a draft of the written master plan or recommendations for implementation next year? How does, maybe you can explain to me the timeline of when the written plan will be presented to the community to help inform some of those implementation issues that my fellow colleague, Director Saini, rightly asked about?
So who from the team would like to step into that one first?
So I will, I will say, right, that through conversations with the district, the focus for this year has been to first develop the systems, right? It's, let's build capacity with a core team, right, that's going to engage in discussion conversations and creation of the systems that we need to provide, and we will be providing. But part of the, the work, right, and the ongoing conversation will be now, which it is our recommendation as Cave, is now let's think about the implementation plan, right? Because it would be great to have this, you know, the document created with all of the great ideas and recommendations of the, of the leadership team, but now we do, would like to see a plan, right, to say, okay, so how are we going to, what we put in the, in the master plan about professional learning, right? So what is going to be the plan for that, right? So that is, those are ongoing conversations, that once we can finalize the master plan, then we can also create a plan. So that is, that is the next step, right, to this process, so that we can ensure that it doesn't stay on the master plan, doesn't stay on paper, right, but it actually, that we create a plan that will, will support, right, the implementation at all different levels, right? So continuing with our parent trainings and sessions, so how do we move forward with continuing to build leadership within our families? What about our students, right? What about the programs that we have? What about professional development? What about articulation of the master plan? So that is the next step, is how do we, how do we share, right, the master plan, and how do we also provide background to our stakeholders about the purpose of it, and also how it'll be implemented? So, so to answer your question, we have had conversations with the district about that being our next step after we are able to complete the master plan itself.
Thank you.
Director Vasilev? Vice Pres, I'm sorry, Vice President, Cabe?
Thank you so much. Just a couple of follow-up questions. One, it doesn't sound like you all have been presented with our LCAP plan. Is, did I hear that correctly or no? And I'm asking strategically, because that is some really good information for you to be looking at as you develop what you're doing right now. There's a whole goal in the LCAP plan specifically around our multilingual learners. So please, if staff could make sure that you all get access to that, and pass comments from our DLEC and our PAC, specifically around the needs in our LCAP plan, would be very helpful in informing your work. And then it's really going to highlight for you a lot of the pitfalls, right, that you're going to go out and ask people about. But you'll have some kind of background, you know, some starting places of, is this still an issue? Is this no longer an issue? Like, have we addressed these concerns? And then, next, understanding the pitfalls of our prior EL master plan, if there were any, I'm not aware, that wasn't ever brought to our attention as areas of our current plan that needed to be improved. It was just a conversation around revamping the plan in general. And so I'm saying all of this because implementation is so key versus coming up with a great plan. And so I'm really hoping that your plan emphasizes also the next steps of implementation. Please, to my final comment, back to the diverse group of multilingual learners that we have in Berkeley. And just a few days ago, I saw that we should be having some Ukrainians join the Bay Area soon. So how is that also now going to impact our, our, our language needs? So just want to keep in mind. So just want to keep in mind that there's a large community that needs to be included, is even in the outreach, right? Even in get making sure that we get their feedback. So that all of our multilingual languages from the various languages across the world are represented in this plan. Thank you.
President Brown, I know there was a question earlier around the parent engagement piece. Would it be appropriate for our team to respond to that? Tony, do you want to respond to that question?
There was a question by Director Sinai around how many families have been engaged. We're beginning with our first cohort and to this point, we have thirty three families that have signed up. We have had the the first session and then there was an interruption of sessions just to to catch up with the different activities I know that were were happening at at the district as well. We reconvened the next two, so we've had basically it's fluctuated from ten, ten to twelve to fifteen families that have been able to be present. But I think it would be, and it isn't, it is a process, it is an effort of collaborating together to help that outreach as a as as a district, as a team is helping to get the word out to families. And sometimes that one on one connection really makes a difference. You know, inviting a parent one on one, helping them see the benefit of coming, building that trust and relationships with it within the group and helping to empower our families to be able to be more engaged, to be more informed, to be able to make better decisions when they are brought to the table and and to feel that they can have a voice. And so that's part of the work that that we do. So I I invite everyone here to to try to communicate to our families. Who would I like to be engaged?
Thank you so much, Tony, for for answering Director Sinai's question and for the information you provided us. Director Babbitt's question, I think, is still pending. Jan, if you wanted to ask a Kabe member to to answer.
Sure, could you repeat the question for me, Director, Vice President Babbitt? Just to make sure I have that correctly, correctly.
Just clarity around how we're going to make sure that all of our diverse languages are included in this process as we do our outreach.
Great, well, I will start and I'm going to ask Marga Marshall to also respond as she has great experience recently as of knowing how to work within our communities as a great past experiences, principal and district administrator as well. I think one of the things as you look at your diverse communities is really getting a sense as your community is even evolving and growing, right? So that data, that information from your district will help and then getting the voices, bringing them in. As you've discussed, bringing, you know, new parents coming in, whether from Ukraine or other experiences, knowing the newcomer process and helping support that as well. So there's ways that I think the master plan can provide guidelines and how you will address the needs of newcomers coming in. So the plan itself creates the guidelines and then it's the practice. And Vice President Babbitt, I just really love, it resonated several times with me tonight of how you just don't want a plan, you want something that you put into action, right? You want something that's going to really make a difference. And so our guidance and helping work with the district to develop the plan would be to put something that you can put into practice. And not that it has to wait forever to print a practice as you start developing it, you can start putting those things in place as well. Marga, what would, what would you want to add, especially from your experiences as a site leader?
Yes, thank you. One of the things I really love, you know, working with with the team is like they are the ones responsible for that implementation and support to our English learners. TK to twelve and instructional practice. So we see from their their experience, what is it needed and and what's, you know, what, again, what are the action plans that can be for the students to be successful and to be proficient in English? Some of the things that we are doing is we actually are looking at the previous EL master plan. And from there, we're looking for key points that we want to continue and use that are still, you know, up to date. But there are some others that are not, they're old, right? Just like the assessment, the proficiency assessment in the previous master plan, it's talking about the CELT. Well, now we know that we have the LPA, right, the the English learners proficiency assessment for California. We're also looking at reclassification, the reclassification process and guidelines is also different from, you know, from the past because there are new scores. Because now we're looking at the new ELD standards. So that's, you know, the the team that when we're working, they are really taking into consideration all the students' needs and again, all their languages and you know, looking at, do we have a newcomers program that we want to make sure that, you know, it's going to welcome the students? And what are the process when a student comes to the district, when the student comes to the school? What are, you know, the next steps for the students to receive the best education and to be in the best program? For the student to be successful. So it's, you know, we've had really, really great conversations and and lots of wheels turning on how to better support the students as we work in these sessions together.
And if I might add to your question as well, so part of the goals that we wrote for this project were also to look at data, look at district data, look at your population data, look at your language data, right? Look at, so that we get to know what the needs are. Which is something that, you know, because of of the, that's one of the reasons why we need, we need to extend the deadline, right, the of the project is because we haven't had a chance to look at that data to identify, like you were mentioning, what languages are represented? And what do we need to do to support them, right? Which is, that's why we don't want to skip any steps, right? We want to make sure that we have that time to collaborate with the district to really get to know your population and the community and all the language needs that are present right now. So that then we can make recommendations on, well, let's identify, you know, the the resources that are out there. What other resources could we offer, right? Or what other processes could we identify? So that, like you mentioned, we are providing communication in multiple languages and it's not just, you know, one or two languages, but that we're really, but to do that, we do need the time to engage in analyzing, right, that information, looking at your student, also assessment data, right? And so we have, because we haven't had a chance to do that yet. It is critical that we do, right, so that we can address all of those areas and that we know that we are supporting not just one group, but really we are addressing the needs of all of the language learners at the district.
Thank you, thank you so much. Marga, you brought up a really important point, especially when we talk about implementation. Our our teachers, our educators, those who work in direct contact with our students or who we definitely need to be pulling information from in regards to what is the need for our students? What do you see happening in the classroom? Where are the gaps? And so I was appreciative, my question was going to be around what what additional engagement opportunities do we have for those educators? I was really happy to hear about goal six, goal three and goal two and the work that you are already beginning on that. But I did want to learn a little bit more about your your plans to continue to engage our educators and and give them authentic opportunities to give feedback.
So that's something that, you know, we, it's the feedback that we receive after the sessions. That's how we're being able to accommodate and and make some modifications. Something that, as we started with our first session, which it was the multilingual master plan workshop, right? And some information and was policies, state legislation, compliance and programs, all of that. And then we went into the second one, that was the English learner roadmap policy. Some of the feedback from the team was, okay, have all this information? We need to start, you know, we need to start putting something into, you know, into into paper, right? And and into group work. So all the expertise from the team, it's like every time now what we're doing is every time there is APD, we have half day of work together into, how is this going to look like once we put it into the new multilingual master plan? So all the expertise and and also looking at, well, we've been doing this, but it's not working. We are not going to where we want to go. What are some of the systems that we really want to create to make sure that the students receive what they need to? Or what are the steps again, where are the, what's the action plan? That we're going to continue or we're going to create to make sure that it's reflected in the new multi multilingual master plan for the students and to benefit that. So all the feedback, because the the team that is, that, you know, that I've been working with, they're really, really into what's best for the students and and bringing the best to the table, right? And and always trying to see, let's do something else, like we've been looking at the the master plan for Berkeley that was, you know, board approved in two thousand and thirteen. But now we're looking at some master plans that are more updated and around. And again, we're also looking at some of the key components because we don't want to recreate the wheel, right? If there is something that it's already done and it's aligned to the year roadmap policy or something that it's aligned to the LPA, well, let's, you know, let's let's take a little of that language and then and then adjust it to the language and the policies that Berkeley has.
And part of our plan is also to, once we have this draft, right, of this master plan is to make it available to the to the stakeholders so that they can provide feedback. So yes, so we definitely want to, we do have the core group working, but part of what we will do in the process is to present it to the board, to their, you know, to parents, to teachers, even to students, right, and receive feedback from them so that we can continue to make revisions until we have something, right, that the district feels reflects the needs and the voices of the community.
Thank you both for that. And the last thing that I was going to say, we talked a little bit about our reclass of our students going through the reclassification process. One other thing, a piece that I would be interested in receiving feedback from is the parents of the teachers of even the students who have been reclassified that are under that two year monitoring period. I think oftentimes we miss them from our conversations and we are mandated, you know, by the state to continue to to help them progress in their English language proficiency. And so I'm interested to see what role that is playing in this work or have you considered engaging those families as well? And so I see Tony's raising a hand.
No, well, I just want to mention that actually yesterday in the conversation, that's exactly what came up. And we had a very deep discussion and the concern of how parents are able to be aware and to seek the resources and support that they need as well. To know that that they do have a voice, that was something that was brought up. Sometimes they feel, you know, that they they can't ask those questions. And so that's part of the work is helping them feel that confidence and and have the knowledge to and the and the and the tools to be able to come to the table and say, you know, I I want some more support for my child. Where I want to work together in collaboration to help bring these, clarify all of these doubts.
Well, that's good to know. That's at the forefront of the mind of our parents so that they're having the space to be able to to share that. Associate Superintendent.
One last thing, President Brown. And I'm not sure if everyone is aware of this, but we also in Berkeley, we've brought on board last school year and we have this year the elevation platform, which is a data platform for ELs, specifically for ELs. It is underutilized, be very clear that it's it's a, and we're also in a transition because we changed our information systems. But that platform, which is something we want to continue to really build upon, will also be a really key component of this master plan, especially around monitoring our students who exit or reclassify because that data set is kept in that system. Because, you know, we also want to always keep track of our ever ELs or those those students who come to us and see how they function and grow through our system, TK twelve. So just another layer to the complexities of this work.
And then if I could just add to that, then I promise we'll move on. But that made me think about the range of English language learners that we have and also maybe the role that multilingual bilingual education plays in this. Knowing that we want the seal of bi literacy to be an option for all of our students. And so when we're thinking about raising one group of students, how do we continue to to raise the bar for all of our students? Go ahead, Jan.
Thanks, Ruby. And I just want to appreciate that. I mean, I think as you look at a multilingual language learner master plan, it's really about how do you value language? And you may have instructional programs in one other language, two the languages. But you're not going to have an instructional program in every language, every student's coming from, you know, we just don't have that capacity. But at the same time, how can you build into your systems and into your your school communities, your environments, this appreciation and value of language? Whether it's just putting, you know, signs up in that welcoming bulletin board in the front office, making sure you have bilingual staff, making sure there's different communication going out, you know, to that fact of translation and interpretation, making it just an easy part of your system. I'm valuing culture and language and especially as you have newcomer parents coming in, your families, you know, building on their assets, building on their experiences. There's work done by a research name, Louis Small, called the funds of knowledge. What is, what's the knowledge that parents coming from the Ukraine are bringing with them or from Mexico or from El Salvador? Or from, you know, whatever part of the, you know, the world they might be coming to you and your schools in Berkeley? How do you draw on that knowledge? And then how do you add on to that? It's not subtractive, but it's really building on the assets. And so what the master plan will will pretend to do, pretend to do is to really build that into your planning. And then looking at the resources you need as a district to implement that as well. And so and then to build the the sense of confidence and feel like, yeah, we do have the resources. We are getting the training we need, we're keeping up to date with these things because things are moving fast in this state. We've had so many different new iterations of different kinds of things in the field of education, let alone all that's been going on with COVID. So I just appreciate the value of of how you can bring language into community. Even though you might not be actually providing instruction in that language, you can provide supports for students to to use that to bridge to their success, both in English and in their own language as well.
And I'd like to add, and and going back to what President Brown was mentioning about the seal of bi literacy and that's something promoting that, you know, that if you know another language other than than English, you can start with those pathways to bi literacy, starting in fifth grade is, you know, and starting in in eighth grade and making these students aware that at the end of twelve grade, you know, you can have that seal of bi literacy in your diploma and how beneficial is to, you know, to add new languages to you. So that is something that conversations that we've also had with the team of continue the promotion of that, the those pathways of bi literacy and the seal of bi literacy in the students. You know, the multilingual language learners in in Berkeley unified.
Thank you both so much for that response and thank you to the entire Kabe team for being here for the presentation you've given us tonight and for the incredible work and partnership that you have with us here in the district.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, President Brown. We just want to end with one quote. Marion Edelman kind of is one of our guiding lights and the quote that we wanted to bring to you was the question is not whether we can afford to invest in every child, is whether we can afford not to. And we do want to commend Berkeley Unified for saying it's time for us to step up into this. It's time for us to to recommit, to find ways that we really are really impacting the needs of all of our students and finding the most effective ways to do so. And it's about our kids, it's really what that is about. Those plans, those systems, those programs, those trainings are all about how our kids are going to perform. And so as we kept that in the forefront, we just want to thank you for the trust, for the partnership. It's been a pleasure working together so far. We know that will continue as we deepen our relationship. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you all so much. Good night.
Good night.
Well, good night to you all. We're still here because we have four other agenda items, but good night. Don't leave, we have more things, have things to vote on, so stay on. But thank you, Kabe, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move to our next agenda item around A through G completion improvement grant plan. So the California Department of Education has allocated one time grants for districts to support the completion of A through G requirements specifically for those historically underserved populations. And so tonight, the board will be provided with a presentation on that plan. And so tonight, the board will be uh provided with a presentation on that plan. Um and will help uh address, that that will help to address the A through G completion rates. And so to uh present the plan will be as Associate Superintendent Aurelio as and also Superintendent Stevens.
Good evening, everyone. At this late hour, I'm going to do my very best to get us through this quickly. Um this one's for you, Director Helper. Um so the A to G grant is a new state grant. Um and I I I do want to preface, preface this by saying by the time this deck and grant was drafted, I was still working under an estimated allocation. Um and literally on Friday, I believe, the final allocation was uh submitted by the state or or made public by the state. So there will be some adjustments to this plan when I bring it back on the twenty-third for an action item. Tonight, you're just going to kind of get a brief summary of what's in the plan. The actual plan itself is attached to the agenda. This is not, what you're looking at is not the plan, this is just a quick summary. But the A to G um improvement grant is essentially targeting our students who have not been meeting those those the A to G requirements. And so it's really intended for us to utilize these dollars to improve and give access to those targeted students. Um this is just a brief overview of the timeline. You can see was a very condensed timeline to come up and or develop a plan. Uh submit it to the board for a discussion and then for approval all before April first. So you could see very quick turnaround on getting this plan to you all. I do want to note that this is not a plan that I had need to submit to uh the county. This is really just for us to discuss in this space. And there weren't any requirements as far as the community engagement that was needed to develop this quick plan. A bit a bit of background on the the work that went into the development of this plan, uh we, the Berkeley High BTA did a bit of a self-assessment around the A to G. Uh making sure that one, our course catalogs were really meeting our requirements. And we did really well in those categories. We, you know, we are set up for success on those fronts. Um and then we started to analyze our data, um our self-assessment data. And we do have gaps. We have definitely gaps between specific racial groups and specific categories of students in how well they complete the A to G requirements. So here's the main highlight. Um so we I we planned to utilize these funds and and all told, it's roughly around three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um and we do have a si- a a number of years to use it. It's not a big, big amount of money, just to be to be plain, three hundred and forty thousand isn't going to go very far um in in this work. So we are actually going to be focused on next school year. And we're going to use utilize these funds to support a number of both existing programs to expand and to grow. Um so we'll be using partial portions of the three hundred and forty thousand to support the launch of the Puente tenth grade cohort at Berkeley High. We are looking to expand some of the bridge offerings. We know this is a very successful program, especially for some our black and brown students who are not meeting the A to G requirements at the same rates as their white and Asian counterparts. Um and so we want to real increase some of those cohorts there. College Bound is a program that we've specifically brought in to target our African-American students and families. And they work with both students and their families and ensuring that we're building that college-going culture. Everything from examining transcripts, making sure they're on track, taking the right courses. We think that's going to really support this A to G work. Included in that is making sure that we have funding to set aside for the outreach that is necessary in in implementing these programs. And then we want to continue to fund the halftime intervention council at Berkeley High does a significant amount of work in identifying our students and ensuring that they're on track for A to G. Including everything from making sure that they're able to, you know, meet the requirements, retake courses, ensuring that they're signed up for summer school. If it's an opportunity to do credit recovery as well. That is my short presentation for you all.
That was very short. Thank you for that. Uh for director comments or questions? Director Simon.
Hi, thanks. Um yay. For variety of reasons, but a quick question, when you talk about expanding bridge cohorts. Um we expanded the ninth grade cohort last year, and every time we add a cohort, you know, it's a multi-year commitment. So are you talking about actually adding another cohort or using this to fund the second cohort that was originally like on one-time money?
It's to to fund the second cohort, but also to really focus on the to the targeted outreach of that bridge program. You know, so making sure since I'm tying some A to G grant dollars, those dollars are specifically earmarked for a group of students. So I want to make sure that when we're doing the bridge work, which is a very successful program, that we are making that concerted effort to target to specific populations of students. And ensuring that, so we're looking at us uh growing that ninth grade cohort. So that ninth grade cohort is going to roll into a tenth grade cohort, which currently there's two ninth grade cohorts, so we have to.
Yeah, sorry. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out. Are you talking about adding another? So will next year there be two ninth grade cohorts or are we going back to one?
There would be two ninth grade cohorts.
So how are we going to fund the subsequent years of those cohorts? Because we're already challenged with finding the funding to fund the second cohort that we started last year, right?
That is, yes, yes.
So this will be part of the, so maybe I won't ask you to answer it all, but in the sense of the budget deliberations. Um we were really intentional. I I would love to grow the
Sure.
Huge bridge fan. No, no doubt about that.
Sounds like a really good problem, but yes.
But but um it's the it's the multi-year commitment on one-time funding. Um so I just want to flag that. And if you guys have already solved it, yay, and you can present it in the budget. But that that's my only flag or question.
Thank you, Director Sin. I appreciate that.
Vice President Babett.
Thank you. I'm um just hoping that you guys could come back with a clear to provide us with a clear understanding of what are, what is the current roles of our actual academic counselors?
Okay.
Because, you know, when we look at seeing which students need extra intervention, that was traditionally my high school counselor's role, uh making sure that I had all the A through G. So I just want to know clearly. How are we um, how are we using that staff to also meet these needs? And not putting these needs of certain communities on a lot of these supplemental plans without being clear around what what they do? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Babett. I'm taking notes and I will get that answered.
Director Vasidav.
Um, thank you so much, Associate Superintendent Aurelio. I just wanted to know, like, do you have the breakdown of the number of students that will be um served with these different programs? And which of these programs can serve um long-term English language learners at the high school too? I think possibly when they and is it just when they're in tenth grade? Like, I would just love to learn, like, which of these, you know, different programs can serve that particular population?
Yeah, and I, and thank you, Director Vasidav. I I won't, I don't have that off the top of my head here, but I can definitely make sure I bring that back. Um when I bring it back for action item, I can make sure that we include some, some of that information.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Uh Director Alper.
Yeah, thanks. Sorry, my video is off, but um thank you, Associate Superintendent Aurelio. I I uh my, I had a similar question to Director Sin eyes and I was really happy to see bridge on the list. And I know that you know, there's own, that that money isn't going to go too far. Um but I'm I'm also, I think, I think everybody on the board is a big fan of bridge. And for me personally, it's, I mean, I I I appreciate that it's um a kind of a, it's an in-house program wi- with our own teachers and um there's a, there's a demonstrated track record of its success at the high school and it's just got a lot going for it. And so I, so I'm um happy to see that that you all recognize that and or put some resources into it and I I did have the same question, Director Sin, I had. And although you said something, Director Sin, I about struggling, we're, I I forget exactly what you said and but something about, you know, like we're the funding for the, to continue that additional cohort that we funded last year and um my memory, I think I'm right, is that we did allocate, you, we used one-time funds, Dr. Stevens, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we used one-time funds to set aside four years' worth of funding for that one cohort. It's just that one cohort for it to go up through all four years at the high school. But um there shouldn't be any question that that cohort is fully funded. Um because I think we we, we did vote to allocate tho- those funds. And then it's just an expensive program. It's part of why it it works, I think. But I also would be curious to know a little bit more. You don't have to answer it now. Uh but how, how you propose to use the funding, this sort of one-time funding for bridge in a way that um you know, is sustainable, I guess. Is so it's just, I guess, just second thing, um Dr. Director Sin has questions.
Thank you, Director Alper.
Uh Director Sin.
Uh sorry, just I forgot one more question is, um in relation to the plan, will you come back? Um and I think again, this is also an outcome goal around A through G completion among our um high pri- our our prioritized kids is in the sense of data. Of what's the goal of, you know, our baseline data for A through G um completion um disaggregated? And what's our goal? Um in using these funds, what what needle are we moving would be helpful?
Definitely, and I'll I'll include that in the next uh, well, it'll be a very brief presentation with data.
Thank you so much. We like brief and we also like data. So thank you for that. Um I don't see any other board member questions. Um Director Alper, I know probably needs to lower his hand. Uh but thank you, Associate Superintendent, for um the information and we look forward to the update. Uh we're going to move to our final discussion item for tonight. Um that will focus around um a uh a long-term solution to permanently relocate our plant operations. And so tonight's presentation, I will focus on four potential solutions. Um and also highlight some of the facts related to each a potential solution. And so I'm excited to invite uh Executive Director John Police to join us this evening for the presentation. I think this is the first time you are saying hi to the board this evening. So welcome. Hello.
It is great. Thank you, President Brown. Thank you, Board. I'll try to be brief, um but succinct. I'm going to share my screen. Uh one moment here. Okay, so we talked about this at Facilities Subcommittee uh earlier this week. Um and we've had several conversations really over the last four weeks, sort of leaving, leading up to this. Um in December, we made the, or we, I brought the recommendation and the board made the decision to close plant operations. That decision was based on hazards uh created by both environmental and seismic and issues. Um so with that, sorry, okay, uh plant operations, just to give some people the brief history. It opened in nineteen fifteen as Edison Middle School. It closed circa nineteen thirty-five uh due to structural deficiencies. Those deficiencies still remain um used as the district's curriculum development center and then plant ops, as well as a myriad of other things along the way. Um what it supported is plant ops was maintenance workshops and storage. Forty-plus district vehicles are purchasing warehouse, our nutritious nutrition services warehouse, print shop, facilities, offices, and then various district support offices. There's a myriad of other smaller ancillary um departments there as well that aren't listed here. Um, excuse me. So the next steps to really relocate the plant operations facility are listed here, and I'm not going to go through them all, but a good, a good number of them have been already completed. Um we're still working on finalizing a permanent receptor facility or, excuse me, a a short short-term receptor facility, something along the lines of five years for some uh for maintenance in our warehouses. We're really close on that. And then it's what we still need to complete with the board is to develop a project for permanent plant operations. Uh and to present that recommendation to the Board of Education. We've developed some project strategies. We're presenting that this evening. Um we're opening it up for discussion with the hope to bring it back for action. So what I wanted to talk about as part of this, though, because of some of the options that are listed is SEQA, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. And SEQA is something that we'll be forced to engage with and rightfully so, but some of the possible mitigation strategies. And I also think that it's important to mention that with the projects that we are considering as a school district and as a government agency, we have some different options. Some of them are just to say that we're categorically exempt. Some are to actually say, eh, we're going to do a negative declaration. We personally don't believe it's going to impact the the environment. We could also do a mitigated night deck. Um the uh the proposals that I have before you is the options, what I would actually suggest to do is a full-blown EIR, an environmental impact report. And the reason for that is it, the SEQA, it's not designed to say whether or not you can or cannot do a project, but rather designed to really say, okay, these are the things that we're going to look at and what are some possible mitigation strategies? These are really high-level, what I listed here, but aesthetics, SEQA would actually call out some design elements that are aesthetically pleasing. Um air quality, they'll talk about directional exhaust. Uh energy, energy efficient building align this, and this actually aligns with the district's sustainability goals as well as our commitment to CHIPS. Um land use and planning, light pollution, noise pollution. Uh they're all listed here, but there is a number of categories. It's it's actually quite extensive that SEQA will look for. And during an environmental impact report, there will actually be a lot of community engagement as well. So that the experts actually reach out to the community to understand what their concerns are with a plant operations project such as this. So I tried to put together a really high-level decision matrix for the board. I went through this with Subcommittee. Um and I just color-coded it uh to try to make it a little bit easier where red is obviously the least favorable. Um just at a high-level look from facilities. Yellow is, there's a few challenges there, but those challenges are present and we can get through them. And green does seem to be the most most favorable. So the four options that we looked at, um one was a suggestion from one of the board directors to share the corporation yard with the city. We reached out and had some conversations with the uh Director of Public Works, and it it's not an option. Unfortunately, the city's corporation yard is sort of busting at the seams. They're really full there. And plant operations houses all these different departments, forty-plus vehicles, plus needs a minimum of eighteen to twenty thousand squeaked feet to operate. Um the second was to rebuild at Oregon and Russell Street, which was the plan, I think, about ten to fifteen years ago. That cost is coming in at about sixty-five to seventy million dollars is where the rough order of magnitude pricing puts us. Um seven to ten years is the timeline. Oregon Street is on the Historic Society uh registry, so it's going to be a little bit of a challenge. We have an underground creek. And we also have some mitigations that we need to do there um just before we can even consider building. The community impact on that is labeled as high just because it is such a dense residential neighborhood. The governing authority is City of Berkeley, uh so we'd have to work with City of Berkeley on planning. Um the zoning is residential and we would do a full EIR. Um there was another option that was uh presented to facilities by the board of possibly rebuilding transportation. We looked at this and one of the biggest challenges here is actually the the buses, the size of the buses and their inability to navigate inside of a parking garage. And we know we have forty-three district vehicles right now that we would have to house there, and there's just not enough surface space. So the way that that would work is actually building what we refer to as a superstructure, which if you could imagine a parking garage um on stilts, it would be on elevated platforms roughly fifteen feet above the bus yard. And then additionally, we would need to build a multi-story building along the Gilman frontage that abuts the transportation building to house all the workshops. That ROM came in at roughly eighty-five to ninety million. The timeline is five to seven years, although we think that's actually a little low. We think it may take a little bit longer. The community impact we labeled as low just because it's really a light industrial area for zoning, so there's not much as much residential. It's City of Berkeley would be the governing authority on that, and then there would be a full EIR there as well. Um the last one was an idea that we came up with because on June twenty-fourth of twenty, the board authorized us to move forward with the project on Millvia Street, and we're already doing work on that. We've already completed some surveys. We've done some geotech, some hazmat analysis, et cetera. And we have a bridging architect and that Millvia And we have a bridging architect. And that Millvia Street project is to build a two-story parking garage for the high school, along with tennis courts on the roof. That was identified as actually the greatest need when we did the facilities master plan based, and that was identified as the greatest need by the high school staff and the high school community. So when we looked at that, we said, well, how could we actually make that possibly work for plant operations? And what we came up with is, we obviously don't want to put up a five-story garage or a four-story garage. So we said, well, what if we go underground? And going underground is very expensive. But if we were to take the two levels of staff parking and actually put those underground and then put two high clearance levels above grade, it would actually give us what we need for plant operations. The first level would be some drive ramps for up and down, but it would also house all the warehouse space or receiving dock, the workshops, et cetera. The second level would actually house all of the district vehicles, as well as the staff parking for those vehicles. That ROM came in as about 25 million, and I'll explain the 25 to 30 in a minute. But that came in right at $25 million in addition to the parking structure, the project that's already been approved by the board. The estimated timeline for that project is three to five years. The community impact on that is mid to high. And the reason why is it's not fair to say that that's not a residential neighborhood, but it is downtown. It's really a mixed-use area. So there is community impact. The community impact we can work with by doing the full EIR. And then the governing authority on that is the Division of State Architect. And I point that out only because ultimately with putting the tennis courts on the roof, this is a student-used building and anything that we use to house students, even if it is for extracurricular or for PE, for athletics, for sports, it does go through the state architect. So that there is in green as well, that price, because it is by far the lowest. The reason that it says 25 to 30 million and the ROM came in at 25, the one thing that this would not house as far as plant operations is all the ancillary office spaces that's needed. Those office spaces are really to support the administration for maintenance, for operations, for facilities. Also, it's the administration of our program management and our construction management. It's the administration of our nutrition services and cooking and guarding and sustainability. So we're looking at the type of office building that we're currently renting right now, since we're displaced. And based on the price per square foot at the current rate and working with some commercial brokers, we estimate the cost to purchase an office building between $3.5 and $5 million. So that's why we estimated 25 to 30, is it's really the 25 million to build this project over at Millvia Street. But I didn't want to be disingenuous in the sense of not including the fact that we still have to house these offices. The reason why I put the variable there, though, is it does lead to a later question for the board to have and a later discussion for the board to have about what to do with the plant operations facility on Russell and Oregon Street. And that conversation can go a few different ways. But one of the options is always that we can consider a possible land swap with another agency, in which case we may not have to spend $3.5 to $5 million to purchase an office building. So again, I promised this to be short, and it is. Tonight is really just for conversation with the intent to bring this back to the board for discussion or for action. But with that, I will stop sharing and open it up for any questions.
Thank you. Board Directors, do you have questions or Executive Director Kalis? Director, Vice President Babbitt?
When you say to bring it back for action, what would be the vote or the action item request?
Well, what I'm hoping to get from the discussion tonight is really which way to go. If the board would like to see us move this towards plant ops or move this towards the Millvia Street, excuse me, move this towards rebuilding Russell and Oregon or move this towards building this into the Millvia Street facility. And assuming that it's one that I'm able to sort of get that information from the board tonight, we'd like to bring it back for action to move it forward as a project. When we look at the timeline, the best-case scenario is three to five years. So we know that we want to do this sooner than later. The other issue is, is when we look at it just from a financial perspective, we see that putting it into the Millvia Street project is by far the cheapest option, the most cost-efficient option that we have. That project is already started. We have a bridging architect onboard and we've had to actually ask that architect to press pause. Unfortunately, the way that it works with the architects is even if we create a two-month delay, it doesn't mean that the project will actually only be delayed by two months. That project can be delayed eight to 10 months, because we lose our spot in the queue working with that architect. That architect is going to keep their staff working and they might redirect them towards other projects. So if the board were to say, okay, let's go with the most cost-efficient model. Let's proceed with doing the EIR, all those things. We'd want to create the project on the books and that's the action that we would be looking for.
Okay, thank you. And then my question is, would the parking for our Berkeley High School staff be taken away or limited at all by this plan?
No, the project that's been pre-approved is two levels of parking at roughly 240 parking spaces, give or take, which doubles what they have now. And that would still remain. It would just be moved to underground. It would still be part of this facility. It would just be, and it would actually be a little bit more secure to that point.
And so then, when you say parking for our transportation vehicles, which vehicles specifically are you talking about? Are you talking about our big yellow buses or?
No, the transportation vehicles is mentioned only if we were to build this at transportation, which is that $80 to $90 million number. The vehicles that we have to house are all the maintenance vehicles, the grounds vehicles, the print shop vehicles, our nutrition services trucks, our warehouse trucks, et cetera. So we have about 43, I think was the last count, district vehicles. But then there's also a myriad of trailers, different equipment that we use that we house at plant ops, et cetera, that does require parking spaces.
Okay, and so all of those would be on that second, one of the underground levels?
Not the underground, but they would be on the above-ground levels. It would be on the upper level. And the other thing, and I apologize, I just want to point out, because I'm thinking about it right now. And earlier in public or in union comments, I heard Steve Collins talking and he talked about the 40 employees that are housed over at plant operations. And when we start associating these kind of numbers with 40 employees, there's a little bit of a sticker shot there. But I do want to point out, what Steve Collins was actually talking about was the maintenance staff. Plant operations actually houses close to 100 staff members with all the different departments that we house.
Director Sinan?
I thought Director Alper's hand was up first.
As it presents on my screen, you are next. But if you want to see, you're tied to Director Alper.
No, I'll go. Okay, okay. Thank you, Executive Director Kalis for the presentation and for the presentation of the Facilities Committee. I just wanted to say, as one of the members with Director Alper on the Facilities Committee, it was, you know, it's a hard conversation, because we don't have a choice. We need to relocate plant ops. That's like, there's not an option there. So I like the fact that Executive Director Kalis did the matrix to really kind of do the red, green, yellow, green, yellow, red on kind of like the go-no-go cost-benefit analysis. You know, Millvia is not my, and I said this in the meeting, it's not my ideal spot to put this kind of operation, because it is downtown and I'd rather see it in light industrial. But when you look at the price tag and you look at the time, it seemed to us as definitely one of the best options. And I want to just respond to, I think, one of the public comments is, is the parking lot with the tennis court, we've already approved, and that was outlined in the bond from the get-go, that that was going to be one of the beginning projects. While you could argue the money for plant ops is going to be taken away, you know, from classrooms or schools, I think there are ways to address how the funding is going to get pulled. And I think Executive Director Kalis and our consultants are looking at our different infrastructure costs and way we budgeted the bond. But we absolutely have to find a place for plant ops. So it's not really, it's not really an option that we can just ignore, ignore it. And I think, given that, the 25 to 30 million is probably from a fiduciary responsibility, you know, the best decision that we can probably make. So I just, from the Facilities Committee, wanted to kind of, I mean, we didn't come out of the Facilities Committee with a recommendation, other than to bring it to the board and discuss. But that, you know, is kind of the gist of what I left that meeting with.
Director Alper?
Yeah, and I think we had agendized it at the, I have to talk a little quieter now that I'm home. We had to agendize it. It was agenda for discussion, but I agree with everything Director Sinan just said. And for all the reasons you said, you know, we strongly support this recommendation. What I, I know we're not voting tonight, but the staff's recommendation to go forward with the Millvia Street option, for all the reasons Executive Director Kalis mentioned, it's the best option and is a really creative and thoughtful approach to a really unfortunate problem that we're faced with. And we don't have a choice but to solve the problem, and this is the way to do it most quickly, most cost-efficiently. And I think what Steve Collins said in public comment is really something to, something that we should, that resonated with me, because that building has been not a safe working environment for a long time. It's been safe, but it's, I mean, it hasn't been an ideal working environment for a long time. And it's something that we know, we've known we need to address. And this is a way to do it, and it's a long time coming. And I just really appreciate all the work that went into relatively quickly coming up with a proposal that really does seem like it will work. So thank you, Executive Director Kalis, for all your work and bringing that to us. And I hope that the board gives the direction to go forward with that recommendation. And then you are able to bring it back to us as quickly as possible for approval, so we don't delay the project in the way that you were just describing to Vice President Babbitt.
Yeah, thank you.
Director Vasudev will be our final comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you so much, Executive Director Kalis, for your presentation and to my board colleagues on facilities for explaining a little bit of the background for us. I agree with the staff's recommendation, for all of the reasons that my facilities board colleagues have mentioned. My question is around parking. Is there any bike parking proposed at the?
Yeah. So right now, we only have, I knew you would ask that, but it's a great question. Right now, we only have the bridging architect onboard. And what the bridging architect does is sort of helps define the parameters of the project, and then it'll go to a design-build team. The initial project, when it was approved by the board last year, where it was just the two levels of staff parking and the tennis courts on the roof, there was several proposals that we looked at, all of which included actually indoor bike parking for staff. Now, with this change to the project parameters, right? The staff-level parking is going to get moved lower down or to below grade. So we'll have to still find a way to incorporate that, and I don't know that it is necessarily on the ground floor. That's something that we're going to have to really play with as we go into design, only because we need a bare minimum of 17,800 square feet to support plant ops. And using that as the ground floor, we also need multidirectional drive ramps for the first and second floors, but then also for the lower level. So, sorry, that was a long way to get there. Yes, there will be bike parking. No, I don't know what it looks like yet.
Okay, and then there's going to be students using the courts, though, right?
Yes, students and also community. The previous board, when they had elected, well, some of our board members here and the prior board as well, when they had elected to put this specifically as a marquee project listed in the ballot text for the bond language, committed that these tennis courts would actually not only be for Berkeley high use, but also for the community. And we'll have to figure out during design how we actually do that, where the community has access, but we don't create safety hazards where, you know, somebody's on the stairwell or things like that. There's a couple of different options that we're looking at, but the idea is really to see those courts maximized.
Well, totally. And so, which is great. And because our students make transportation decisions on their own at the high school level, I would love, they're not only to be bike parking, but secure bike parking for them, too.
Yeah. I don't, I just, I want to be very honest. When the conversation around bike parking in the parking garage was talked about, it was more about staff, because there is bike parking on the campus for students. And we've actually, we actually just ordered a number of bike racks to add some more. So, but I don't know that inside the garage, the thinking was ever that it would be student bike parking in the garage, although we can definitely have that conversation.
Yeah, I would love to explore it, because if they're using the courts late at night, you know, I don't want them to have to like go back. But maybe I just need to connect with you later to go look at both bike parking options and discuss.
No, I think that's a great idea. I'd love to.
Thank you. Student Director Mascanania Swan?
Sorry, just briefly, your question, Director Vasudev reminded me, or just made me think about, for the parking, it's just going to be predominantly, or it's just going to be only for staff, right? There's not going to be any parking for students available.
Yeah, that is correct, because it really falls into what President Meyer talked about earlier from BFT, about right now, the number of not only teachers, but all staff that throughout the day are actually having to leave their classrooms to go outside and move their vehicles. So we're able to actually increase this from about 120 to 240 on the parking spaces. But it is thinking that it's only for staff.
Okay, yeah, I just know many students face the same issues with having to pay hundreds of dollars a month for parking and leaving their classes during like educational time to move their cars, or a lot of students who have to commute from other cities who are predominantly lower-income students are the ones who are having to deal with moving their cars a lot, because oftentimes they can't afford to pay for parking garages. I know we're dealing with very limited space, so I understand giving staff priority. But I think it's something important to look into in the future, is providing some degree of parking spaces for students who are in need.
No, I think that's great feedback and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Executive Director Kalis, for your presentation. And I believe you want our direction, and so I definitely support the staff recommendation, along with Director Alper, heard mentioned, as well as Director Vasudev. And so, for directors, not to belabor any longer, but can you please just use your hand signal to give Director Kalis direction? Beautiful. Okay, there is your direction. Thank you so much. And thank you for the incredible work that you are continuing to do in our district. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks for staying so late.
Yeah, definitely, because the hour is late. And speaking of the hour being late, we actually need to extend the meeting, because we do have two other action items. And so I'm going to ask for a motion to extend the meeting from the Board Director. I think you all are asking the same question. It is 11 o'clock. It would be a hairy, audacious call to extend it to 10:45, or 11:45, rather. Do we think we can get through both of those items in 45 minutes? Or do we need to extend it to midnight?
No, I think 45 is more than enough.
I was thinking maybe 30. How much time do you need?
I think we're going to need probably 10 minutes to present and then questions, depending on, it's a pretty short presentation.
Okay, good to know. We'll extend it to 45, just to be safe, so that we don't have to come back again.
Oh, move. We can't come back again.
We cannot. So is there a second?
I have a second.
Ms. Barrios, could you please take the roll?
Sure. Student Director Mascanania Swan?
Yes.
Director Sinan?
Yes, and we don't have to use it all.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes, hoping for 30.
Vice President Babbitt?
Yeah.
And President Brown.
Yes, thank you. All right, so, uh, our next present, or not presentation, but our first action item for tonight um, is around the second interim certification for the second interim, uh, report. Um, so as you all are aware, the second interim report covers a reporting period from July first, twenty twenty-one, to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, and so, to give us, uh, the presentation on that report will be Assistant Superintendent, uh, Paulie Follensby, Assistant Superintendent of, uh, Business Services, so Assistant Superintendent Follensby.
So, good evening. Oh, thank you. So actually, I, um, I'm going to have Liz Carum present with me. She's our fiscal director. And, um, she's going to take us through the first part of the presentation, and I will take you through the second part. So can you promote Liz Carum to be a panelist, so she can present and share her screen?
Assistant Superintendent, I don't see Liz Carum in the attendees list.
Yeah, I don't see her myself.
Uh... Well, why don't I just take us through the present, she stayed up this late to do this, so um, can someone just send her a text, um, or send her an email? I'll start the presentation in the meantime. So, um, let me share my screen. So I'm going to put this in slideshow mode, so you can see. So real quickly, to take us through our second interim, um, as President Brown mentioned, this takes us through January, um, thirty-first. And this is our best thinking in terms of how the district's gonna, um, end the year um, in the unrestricted general fund. So we're asking the board tonight to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two second interim budget report. And the agenda, um, consists of us looking at the budget summary and highlights, the variance report, ADA, multi-year projections for the unrestricted general fund, as well as looking at, um, uh, just a quick overview of our budget priorities in terms of our governor's budget and our ongoing expenses and one-time funding. The budget highlights, um, remember the fir-, the second interim is based on the governor's proposed twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And we do have a positive certification, which means that we'll be able to meet our, um, our obligations for the current year and the two subsequent years. We're deficit spending by two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and we have an undesigned fund balance of three point one million. When we look at the variance report, you can see how this compares to our original projection in, um, at the first interim. And then we also have a lot of explanations as to what caused the change. Um, we do have one-time expenses and savings and, um, and unspent balances of one point eight million dollars, and that's what's driving this reduction in our deficit spending, and I'll be taking you through that in more detail. And now I'm going to, um, open the link to the, oh, variance report, so we can get a closer look at what actually happened between our first interim and our second interim. I'll make it a little bit bigger. So looking at our revenues, there was an immaterial change, um, one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars um, in our local revenues. You notice there are no changes in our LCFF um, or, um, base or supplemental funding, and that's predominantly because the governor's, um, proposal did not have any changes for twenty-one, twenty-two. He was just proposing for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, the significant change is in our total expenditures, and I will fast forward to, um, the letter B for a full explanation of that one point eight million dollar swing from first interim to second interim. So at second interim, we go through our budget, and we are trying to project how we're going to be ending, um, the year, so we're looking at actuals to the budget. And wherever there are unspent but balances, and we don't think we're going to be spending them um, before the end of the year, we actually take it to the bottom line. Um, so that was two point five million dollars, and predominantly, it was actually in our health benefits and in our unemployment, um, or, or unemployment rate, which was overstated at the first interim, and we're correcting it at the second interim. We also have, um, took into account one-time expenditures, and it's listed here. Um, expenditures such as dyslexia title on consulting, technology contracts and COVID supplies. I have the detail of that further in the presentation. And, um, with other various, um, transfers and decreases in our direct, um, support and indirect cost, um, we have, um, savings review, well, we spent, um, six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of that two point five million, which connects us to the one point eight million that I discussed earlier in the presentation. I'm going to take you back to where I was there. Sorry for the back and forth. Um, so with that one point eight million dollars, um, we then look at our, other changes, um, from first interim to second interim. And we see that we contributed more to our special education program by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, this program was assisted by, um, some new revenue, not a lot, but some new revenue that came in. Um, and we used, um, savings in the special ed, um, account to cover existing expenses, and we determined that at that, at this point in time, special ed needs an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is a moving target, because if we, if we have more kids identified or more kids going for services, this number will change. But at second interim, we're, um, giving another three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the special education, um, program. So the, the net change is one point three million dollars um, from first interim to second interim, and we have to be careful um, to realize that this is one-time savings. So when it, it's not available for expenses, it's not available to start a new program, these one-time fund, um, expenses go back into the budget at second, at the, um, twenty-two, twenty-three year, because this is just one-time savings. We're just truing up the budget, but it's not a true savings, because when we start the following year, we're back to basically zero-based budgeting. So we're going to be budgeting, um, or as if all, all salaries are fully, uh, all positions are fully staffed. So, um, just a word of warning that, yes, we have one point three million dollars change from first interim to second interim, but this change is temporary. And if you look at the multi-year projections, you will see that we're pretty much back to where we started in terms of our expenses. Um, when I, we had our, um, audit committee meeting on Monday, and thanks to Vice, Vice President Babett was in attendance, and, um, one of the things that came up, um, uh, one of our members of the audit committee wanted to, a reminder of what happened with our AB, so I thought we should put it into this presentation. So as a reminder, um, in this year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we're funded at the nineteen, twenty levels. Um, but in twenty-two, twenty-three, we have, um, this new introduction of the, um, the average calculation for ADA for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, a word of, um, interest actually about this calculation for the average ADA. Um, our county office, um, has asked us to kind of designate the impact um, of this additional funding. What if we were adding it as a commitment in our ending fund balance? What would our fund, ending fund balance actually look like? And that's because this ADA, um, proposal has not gone through the legislation as yet. It's, it's brand-new legislation, and it has not been fully approved. So to be prudent, um, ACOE is asking us to set aside this additional funding, and I'll, I'll speak more to that when I get to that slide.
Assistant, uh, Superintendent Follensby, is the USD staff, is that Liz? Computer, I can't, I see a hand raised in the attendees. I'm wondering if that's Liz.
Does it say staff?
It says USD staff.
That would be Liz. Yeah, has she been there the whole time?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, that would be Liz. Can you promote her, so at least, um, she stayed up for she's awake for.
I just promoted.
That's me.
Sorry, Liz.
We didn't know that was you, and I didn't have my phone to text you.
That's okay.
Did you want to take us through the multi-year? Liz, I did the variance, and I've just kind of finished the ADA. Okay, so I'll turn it over to Liz. Thanks, Liz, and, um, Liz will take us through the multi-year projection.
Okay, hang on.
Switching gears.
Okay, um, so the multi-year, um, projection um, is, uh, based on the unrestricted general fund revenue, and, and it's based on the governor's proposed budget. So at first interim, it was based on the state's enacted budget, and now at second interim, it's based on the governor's proposed budget. Um, one-time revenues and expenditures and savings have been removed from the out-years, um, including the one-time savings. So, um, we're sort of starting from scratch, and we can't recognize those, um, savings. The multi-year does not include, uh, budget priorities or negotiated salary increases, so we're looking at something before, um, other consideration, budget considerations have been added. And reductions are necessary to address our priorities and negotiated salary increases. Um, and then, uh, based on direction from ACOE, um, we are, uh, do, we've done two multi-years, one to include the um, assumption, the, the assumption, revenue assumptions because of the new formula for the ADA formula, and the other to show that the impact of the difference. Um, if we don't, if we don't uh, receive that, if that formula doesn't actually get passed into law. Okay, so, um, this is the, this is the scenario, um, that for, for second interim, um, you can see what's happened to um, revenue. It's increasing from twenty-one, twenty-two. It's increasing in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four, and you can see that, um, and that, and that that's based on this, this new formula that would give us more ADA. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, we're getting prior year ADA of, uh, ninety-four, twenty-six. Um, in this scenario, we're getting ninety-two, twelve, which is higher than, um, the number we used when we did first interim. So, um, if you look at the, the bottom line, ending fun, fund balance this year is, we're estimating at three million. Next year, at one point nine million, and the, and in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, two million pending fund balance. So this is the scenario using the three-year average ADA. So, uh, uh, again, that's, you can see what the, the funding is, but we're, we've broken out what the difference is. So if you look at the else, at, under LCFF funding, if you look at the LCFF funding revenue using three-year ADA average, we get four million dollars more in twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. So, if we can't, if that doesn't pass, or we can't take advantage of that, um, you can see the ending fund balance, we're taking it out as, um, under a scenario where we don't get it, which would leave us in twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, negative two point one million in twenty-two, twenty-three, and negative one point nine million in twenty-three, twenty-four. So, um, you know, we still have budget priorities. We're, um, in the, we're still consulting with um, uh, the district committees, and we're, we're going to continue to do that. The board is going to prove, going to, um, be approving, uh, budget reductions and budget priorities on, by June first, on June first. And then there are some, um, we can link to the one-time savings, um, at second interim.
Let me make this bigger, Liz.
Okay. So this, these are just the, um, sort of line items that affected the, um, the sa-, that produced the savings. So, and the savings were, um, a, a lot of the savings were due to, um, adjusting for um, removing um, unspent balances for, um, health and welfare. So, um, we budget at the beginning of the year, we budget vacant positions, we budget assuming, um, a, a, a certain level of medical benefits, and if the positions aren't filled, or if, um, the, the utilization is less, then we can, at, at this point of the year, we, we can adjust to some savings. The other savings we recognized was, um, the SUI rate, when we, uh, originally did the budget, was one point two-three percent. It was the enacted budget subsequently reduced it to point five percent. So we recognize this, that savings in our budget too. And then here, these are, the remainder are the list of things that, um, either um, that increases, or you can see the decreases, but also the increases. So there were, um, there's a, was a settlement, um, VPs at the high school, uh, the dyslexia settlement. Um, those are the biggest items, but netting out to a million, a million nine in savings. So our next steps are, are, are to continue with the meetings. In May, we'll have the governor's, um, uh, budget, May budget revision. Um, then, again, the board, um, board decisions on budget reductions and budget increases on June first, and then we'll adopt a budget on June twenty-ninth.
Okay, thanks, Liz. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'll take any questions, or we'll take questions.
I thank you, Assistant Superintendent Follensby. Also thank you to you, uh, Liz, for, for joining us and being here so late. Uh, board directors, sorry about how late it is. Board directors, um, do you all have questions, uh, for either Assistant Superintendent Follensby or Adam's screen? Wow, who's this new group of people? Um, well,
Thank you.
Yeah, it seems as though we don't have any questions, uh, for you this evening, uh, but just an appreciation for you, uh, for the work, for this information that you all, um, have presented. So thank you. Just kidding. Director, Vice President Babett has a question. You were this close. You were almost home safe.
No, I don't have a question. I just wanted to, um, thank you for all of your hard work and, uh, for the work of the audit committee, because it is a great place to ask a lot of these preliminary questions, and everybody's still awake, and everybody's still intrigued. It's not eleven o'clock. Um, but I do want to say to, um, my board colleagues that we, um, this is our CSBA week, the, the month of advocacy for school boards to advocate with our state senators, and so, um, I do have meetings with Nancy Skinner and Buffy Wicks. If anyone wants to join me, you're welcome to join me, uh, because we definitely need to, um, meet the challenges of our budgeting, uh, crisis by going out and making sure that we seek funding. And I heard you, it's one-time funds, because you know I want to.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you, Director Babett, for your comments, and we, uh, thank you for the invitation. We will definitely, uh, take you up on that, or at least I will. Thank you for that. All right, well, you are home free. Uh, thank you, uh, Liz Carum, and thank you, Assistant Superintendent Follensby, uh, for your presentation and for staying very late into the evening. We're going to move, we are going to move on to our, uh, next and final action item for the night, which is a public hearing uh, for the initial proposal for success, for the successor agreement between BFT and the district. Um, and so I think it is proper at this time to open, this is a public hearing, so open up this public hea- Um, and so I think it is proper at this time to open, this is a public hearing, so open up this public hearing. Right now and also open it up with public comment. Uh, correct Superintendent Stevens? Great. Is there anyone uh who is here for public comment on this piece? Um, I see Michelle in uh the chat in the list of attendees with her hands raised. Michelle, are you speaking on this piece? Or is your hand raised for the second opportunity for public comment?
Hi, yes, this is Rhonda Cho again. And is public comment open to all agenda items or specifically this?
Uh, there is a public comment um period right now for this specific agenda item. And as soon as we close the hearing on this, we will then open up the second opportunity to speak on a public comment on any agenda items that have been agendized this evening. Anything, anything to the.
Right, and that is um what's relevant for me. So I will yield my time.
Okay, we, I, I believe we'll get there in just a few seconds, so hang tight. Okay? Thank you so much. Uh, are there any other comments for this public hearing? And seeing then we need to entertain a motion, I will now entertain a motion from the board uh to, to vote on this. Uh, is there a motion?
Are we voting to close the public hearing? What are we voting on?
Uh, we're, we're voting to approve the proposal, is that the initial proposal?
I, I think you're correct, President Brown, in, in asking for a vote to approve the um, the, the sunshining of these articles.
So moved.
Thanks, Superintendent Stevens. Is there a second?
A second.
Thanks, Director Vasudev. Um, Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll? And please let the record reflect that Director Alper uh needed to step out. He is not feeling well, so he will not be included in this vote. Thank you.
I also, is, we still have the student director and Junena Mascariña? Okay, I didn't see her on there. Um, Student Director Mascariña Swan?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
Vice President Babit?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, now we will move to the second opportunity for a public comment. I believe um Ms. Cho is here for public comment. And if there are any other public commenters, this is the perfect opportunity to raise your hand. I don't see any other hands raised, so Vice President Bab, uh Michelle has three minutes for a public.
Thank you, President Brown. Again, this is Rhonda Cho with Emerson Elementary um PTA. And this is my second comment this meeting. Thank you for your service during these extended meetings. Um, I am referring to the previous agenda item twelve point five and the presentation of Facilities Director John Kalis. I would like to remind everyone of the stated criteria for project consideration in bond measure G. With the priorities are to improve teaching and learning outcomes, improve campus safety while promoting a welcoming environment, and correct infrastructure deficiencies. According to the facilities needs assessment file, Emerson's air system is slated for update in twenty twenty-eight. How can this be expedited considering the ongoing pandemic and regular fire seasons? There needs to be increased community engagement and transparency in the prioritize prioritization of bond G funds. Um, Directors Julie Sinai and Ty Alper advocated for this as well in the facility subcommittee meeting. So please explain, how are we prioritizing spending tens of millions of dollars on a parking garage and tennis court with a three-to-five-year plan? When our elementary schools today are still waiting for basic infrastructure like ventilation and plumbing?
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Cho for, for your comments. And thank you for um, for staying back for um, for this for this second comment period. Um, we, we really appreciate you being here. Um, I believe we do need to take a step back, board. Uh, we, we approved um the second action item. Uh, but even after this, receiving the incredible presentation from Assistant Superintendent Phalonsby and Ms. Cram, we actually need to vote on that. So we'll, we'll go ahead and take a quick step back. Um, and I'll entertain a motion to uh receive the uh second interim report and vote to approve it.
I'll move to approve the second interim report.
Moved by Director Bab, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Vasudev. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Director Mascariña Swan?
Yeah.
A student, or sorry, um, Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Vasudev?
Yes.
President Babit?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you.
Also, I'm not sure if it was important, but I, I seconded it. Or maybe me and Director Vasudev seconded it.
Oh, no, you did.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. I saw Director, Director Vasudev's microphone off and assumed that she seconded it. I'm so sorry. Ms. Barrios, please let the record reflect that uh Student Director Ms. Mascariña Swan actually was the one to second. And I apologize for the mistake.
Well, dude, I got that the first time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Alright, you all, well, we have reached eleven twenty-three. Uh, Director Sinai, you were correct. We only needed thirty minutes. Uh, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much uh to everyone uh who stayed here this, this evening to hear the meeting. And thank you to the staff who stayed on.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, President Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you.